That in accordance with council's code of meeting practice, this meeting is being livestreamed. The acknowledgement of country and prayer of council will be conducted by Dr Eddie Jackson, the CEO.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and good evening, councillors. Before we begin proceedings, we would like to acknowledge the traditional custodians of the land on which we meet and their ancestors, past and present. The Cabrio Clan of the Darrick Nation. I also acknowledge that this land was accessed by peoples of the Darrick and Darrick Nations. The affirmation of council. We affirm our hope and dedication to the good government of our city and the wellbeing of all of Liverpool's residents, no matter their race or creed. Tonight, we affirm our hope for sound decision-making by council, which will improve the quality of life in our city. We express our expectations and best wishes for Australia, our nation's future, the mayor, councillors and staff of council, and all those associated with good government in Liverpool. And the prayer of council. For the God of our faith, we who are gathered at Liverpool City Council pray for the good government of our city. We pray for the wellbeing of all Liverpool's residents, no matter their race, gender or creed. Tonight, we pray for sound decision-making by council, which can improve the quality of life in our city. We pray for Australia, our nation's future, for the mayor, councillors and staff of council, and all those associated with good government in Liverpool. Amen.
Thank you. I just want to let our IT people know that councillor Chitty is having trouble connecting. I'm not sure if anybody can assist him, but he's just sent me a message to say he's having problems. Um, okay, do we have any apologies? No apologies? All right. Well, we have, um, we have three, uh, two condolences. Uh, the one is for Bernard Jeffrey. Tonight, we pause to honour the memory of Bernard Jeffrey, a valued staff member of Liverpool City Council. Bernard passed away suddenly last week. He was aged sixty-six. Bernard worked for council in the position of Senior Land Development Engineer, and he was, uh, will be sorely missed by his colleagues, especially the Land Development and Development Assessment and Infrastructure and Environmental Teams. Bernard will be remembered as someone who was always ready to help in any matters asked of him, without question or complaint. His knowledge, his expertise. And expertise and efforts were recognised and respected within the development community. I need somebody to turn to mute, please, sorry. He was instrumental in supporting the design and delivery of engineering systems in Austro-Leppington and was extremely reliable as a colleague. He worked tirelessly with developers and the planning team to achieve great outcomes throughout growth areas. The news of Bernard's passing has been met with great sadness by all the council staff. On behalf of the Liverpool City Council, I humbly express my deepest condolences to Bernard's wife, Leanne, and all family and friends. Our thoughts are with you all during this very difficult time. May he rest in peace, and I move the usual condolences. Seconded.
Good to second it, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. The second one is a general one. Tonight, we pause to honour the memory of those lives that have been lost in COVID-19, particularly residents of the Liverpool local government area. It is such a heartbreaking time for many people, and we take this time to remember them. The current Delta coronavirus outbreak began on the sixteenth of June. Almost fourteen thousand cases and seventy-five related deaths have occurred since it was reported as of yesterday. Every one of those deaths is a tragedy, and I offer my deepest condolences to the loved ones of all of those who've lost their lives in this pandemic. The Delta outbreak has affected the Liverpool community enormously, with a total of one thousand and forty-nine cases so far recorded amongst our residents. Um, as of Tuesday, the twenty-fourth of August, eleven people have lost their lives after contracting the disease at Liverpool Hospital, despite entering the hospital with other health conditions. Several people who contracted the virus within the community have sadly died at the hospital. Several other Liverpool residents have died at home. This is an incredibly difficult time for families who are sick with the virus themselves. I would like to extend my deepest thanks to all the healthcare and frontline workers. The challenges you're facing at this point in time would be immeasurable. Yet you continue to put your lives before, uh, for others, others before your own, risking your own health to help others, as you keep showing up to care for those who need it most, and we will continue to stay home for you. Most of the Liverpool community are doing the right thing and adhering to the lockdown rules. We know this disease spreads quickly once it's within households, and it's often brought back to households by authorised workers doing the essential work to keep our society functioning. The stigma around the disease unfortunately means some people seek medical help far too late, once their condition is already critical. COVID-19 is also playing a role on the community's force to adapt to learning and working from home and spending all your time in the same environment. Many people also have lost work entirely, or cannot work from home, and are struggling just to put food on the table. Milestones can't be celebrated, grandparents can't meet their newborn grandchildren, and people can't attend the funerals of loved ones. You will come out of this lockdown and slowly return to normal. It can't come soon enough, but we must have hope. But we will always be touched by this difficult period in our lives. I urge people to continue to get vaccinated. I know this is always a straightforward process, and getting an appointment can be challenging. I hope that the four community vaccination hubs across Liverpool, which was doing a great job of vaccinating locals, will be able to reopen again early September. Nothing will bring back the lives of those lost in this pandemic. There are so many people in our community suffering immensely, and we need to be kind to each other and offer support when we can. While this is a challenging time for all, it is much harder for those directly affected by the loss of someone they love to COVID-19. May they all rest in peace. And I, I, we won't move the condolences to be sent because it is a bit difficult, but I'll move those condolences. And seconded. Thank you in many places. Thank you very much. And we might have a minute's silence, um, for those folk who have passed, and I'm just going to mute and turn my camera off for the moment. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is confirmation of the previous minutes. Okay, moved by councillor Sheldon and seconded by councillor Hall. Thank you very much, gentlemen. Declarations of interest?
Madam Mayor, I have two.
Yep.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. The, um, in relation to Conf-oh-six, uh, in part, that report refers to an area near where do I live, and therefore own real estate. Uh, and also Conf-oh-eight, uh, as it happens, I think I own shares in one of the companies referred to in that report. In both cases, it's hardly pecuniary, it's hardly significant, but I'll call it pecuniary and significant anyway, and I won't be present in the debate. If somebody could text me when the debate is over, thanks.
Oh, yes, certainly. Um, any others?
Um, Madam Mayor, I.
Councillor Caliander?
Sure, thank you. Um, Madam Mayor, I, um, would like to declare an interest in COM, uh, I think it's COM-oh-two. Um, I have had previous dealings with one of the organisations listed, um, in my, um, sort of work as a, as a councillor and a community member. Um, it's not significant, it's not pecuniary, um, but I'll leave the room.
Okay, thank you. Councillor, um, Rhodes?
Uh, yes, Madam Mayor, thank you. Uh, COM-oh-four, I believe, the Order of Liverpool Awards, less than significant. I know some of the people, but not all of the people nominated. However, I will leave the room and will not vote to avoid any perception of bias.
Thank you. Any others?
Yes, Madam Mayor.
Yes, councillor Hall.
Uh, I think it's Conf-config-oh-five, the Civic Awards. I know councillor Rhodes said it's oh-four, but I thought it was oh-five.
Yes, it is. It's oh-five. Shepherd Street is oh-four.
Oh, I thought.
So that's oh-five for councillor Rhodes, yep.
It's a COM-oh-five, Madam Mayor.
Oh, did you? I wrote four when I heard four, but that's okay. We've made it five. Yes, councillor Hall, you're oh-five, too?
I, I have, um, a non-pecuniary but significant interest, and I won't be participating in the debate. I know several of the people in the awards.
Okay, then, no problem. Any others?
Madam Mayor?
Councillor Hurd?
I would like to declare an interest in, um, planning and compliance, Plan-oh-two. In the addendum, I live in Middleton Grange. It's non-pecuniary, less than significant. I want to stay in the room. I want to vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, somebody else raised their voice?
Yeah, uh, same as councillor Rhodes and Hall, about the Order of Liverpool, COM-oh-five, I know. I know, yeah, I know nominee of Wardy and all, um. Uh, declare a non-pecuniary, less than significant, and, um, I'll, I'll remain.
Remain. Okay, thank you. Any others? Um, okay, thank you. Okay, public submission.
Just to go back a step, um, I'd also like to add COM-oh-five, um, to my conflicts of interest, um, same reasoning, and I'll stay in the room.
Okay, thank you. George will chase those up with you.
Yep, it's worked.
Deputy Mayor, did you wish to add anything? No. Okay, we have no public submissions at the moment, so we can move off on those items. Now I've lost my piece of paper, which is really not a good thing. Oh, no, I haven't. Next item is a merril minute. Um, this August, we mark the sixty years since the start of the construction of the Green Valley Housing Project, an important part of the history of Liverpool and the nation. Before European colonisation, the land, which later became known as Green Valley, was the home of the Cabrio Clan of the Darrick Nation. In eighteen oh-four, in the early days of the British colony of New South Wales, Governor Philip King granted a large portion of land making up this area to support the Orphan School. The name Green Valley was used from the late nineteenth century to refer to the area north-west of the town of Liverpool. For a long time, Green Valley was mostly farming land, sitting on the fringe of Greater Sydney. Some early landowners in the area included Peter Miller, Charles Ambrose Scriber, James Bull and Bridget Peters. On the third of August nineteen sixty-one, the Housing Commission of New South Wales marked the turning of the first sod for an ambitious public housing project. The housing constructed between nineteen sixty-one and nineteen sixty-four was intended to provide accommodation for six thousand families, many relocating from other densely populated areas of Sydney. Green Valley today encompasses the suburbs of Green Valley, Ashcroft, Busby, Cartride, Heckenberg, Miller and Sadler, and part of Hincham Brook. They all share the two-one-six-eight postcode. The people of Green Valley are proud and they have faced challenges, but Green Valley has also been, also been a place of opportunity. Peter Wier's nineteen seventy-three film Whatever Happened to Green Valley defied many deeply held and incorrect perceptions of the area. The film is available online through the National Film and Sound Archive website and is worth viewing. Green Valley is also an unrecognised rugby league cradle with deep links to our victorious New South Wales blue state of Orangenside. The game of rugby league owes a lot to the valley, and several rugby league legends and current players attended Ashcroft High School. Can I say Ashcroft High School's specialty was rugby league at the time, including Brad Fittler, Jason Taylor and Junior Polo. I'm also attended Ashcroft High School, so there you go. The Green Valley area is also producing future leaders. For the past years, the Liverpool Council chambers held sessions of the two-one-six-eight Children's Parliament. This groundbreaking initiative between council and Mission Australia aims to help primary schools in the area have an active engagement in civic life and participate in the decisions that directly affect them. As we look forward to the next sixty years for the Green Valley area, I believe there's great potential, which will be met by further investment in infrastructure and programme of urban renewal. Council is aiming to redress the historical disadvantage in Green Valley and surrounds through the Miller Social Infrastructure Masterplan. The nearby learning and community hub at Phillips Park, currently under development, will also be a great facility for the community. The area will sit only short distance from the future Western Sydney International Airport and Eretropolis, and all the opportunities this will provide. Green Valley will continue to thrive in coming years, and I look forward to seeing its growth and the future achievements of its residents. Congratulations to a great community with a bright future. And I move that we acknowledge the sixty, uh, we acknowledge the sixtieth birthday of the suburb of Green Valley. I move that and I put that, those in favour. Those against, declare it carried. Thank you. The next item is on page sixty-three of your book. If I can turn the page.
I have a few questions, Madam Mayor.
Yes, councillor Hall.
This is, uh, the, the amendment for the, uh, Growth Centre at Leppington, I believe. Uh, my concern is that this will be put on public exhibition, and one of the issues that I have, and I did a presentation on it at the last council meeting, is the riparian zone. Uh, there is a significant riparian zone in this, and I think the residents, when this goes on exhibition, should be given the opportunity to comment on that. And I don't believe that is part of the, the current documentation, although it's referenced to a report dating back to June twenty fifteen, I believe. So, could I find out if that's going to be included?
Okay, I'll ask the CEO to ask the appropriate officer.
Thanks, Madam Mayor. David Smith?
Thank you. Through the CEO, uh, this, um, DCP amendment is relating primarily to the Rode Network councillor in response to previous council's support for the planning proposal and the VPA. So it's not directly related to the riparian corridor, uh, through, through this portion of East Leppington.
Thank you.
It, it actually does mention the water treatment as part of the report. That's why I asked.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, all right, noted. You have a motion?
Happy to move that, Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Chitty. And who's seconded? Sorry?
Councillor Hagerty.
Thank you. And is your IT up and running, councillor Chitty?
Currently, Mayor is.
Oh, that's good. Thank you. Uh, moved by councillor Chitty, seconded by councillor Hagerty. Any opposition? I'll put it, those in favour, those against, a carrot carried. The next item is on page seventy-two.
Happy to move the recommendation of council, Madam Mayor.
Seconded it, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, councillor. Hold on, councillor Rhodes moving and seconded the deputy mayor. Yes, go ahead.
Uh, Madam Mayor, I'd like to, um, suggest a slight amendment, um, to the motion as per the book.
Hmm.
The mover and the second are happy to, uh, accommodate it.
Let's see what it is and we'll hear what they say.
Well, uh, so I'd like to, uh, keep one as is, and, um, with two, um, have it read, develops a framework for community and developer-driven. So rather than encourages, replacing encourages with develops a framework for.
Are the mover and second are happy with those changes?
That is fine.
Yep, that's a problem.
Uh, and then at the end of it, um, include a timeframe, so by the November twenty-twenty-one meeting.
Well, that might be a problem because that'll be in the period where you can't make any decisions, so.
Uh, yes.
I would, that will happen in October, the October meeting, so my suggestion would be to, you'll, if you want a timeframe, it'll have to be in the new year.
Uh, sure. So maybe, um, a progress, you know, an update on progress by, by the October or November meeting.
Okay, yeah, just a progress report, yep.
Yep, sure.
Are the mover and second are happy with that? Yes, councillor Chitty.
Just quickly, Mayor, can I ask, and the mover and second to keep it the way it is, um, if we're gonna get a progress report, which will probably, yeah, it'll be a progress report, uh, shortly, um, we then don't make any progress on encouraging people to actually get this done. It's just a progress report on a framework that could be developed in the new year. Can, can we leave it as encouraged, so that we can actually encourage them from now, because it is a great idea? And then when the new council comes in, they can start working on their framework. If the new council ever comes in, Mayor.
Yeah, I'm beginning to feel that way too, councillor Chitty. Um, the mover and second are, uh, what do you think?
Yeah, I'm happy to leave it as is.
No, what are we doing? We're taking out the word, um, develops a framework for.
And putting back encourages.
Yeah. Yeah, put back encourages, um, for.
And maybe what to satisfy everybody's needs is at the end of point two, that council receives a report on the progress of, of this resolution. That way, it doesn't get lost in the.
Hmm, I guess my only concern with that is, um, you know, it's a little bit difficult to, it's a little bit difficult to, to track what encourages means, um, and therefore have a progress on, on encouraging people. So you can sort of say, oh, we've had X, Y, Z conversations, which is fine, but unless you are actually kind of working towards something, what is the progress report for?
Well, my suggestion is, given the mover and the second are happy to revert back to the original wording, and they're happy with that tag that I just put in, my suggestion would be to move the amendment as a separate thing, council.
As, so as a foreshadowed motion, or?
No, just as an amendment.
Can, can I just say, um, this could include rooftop gardening, balcony, balcony gardening and garden beds in common areas. Isn't that the framework that it's sort of set out, councillor Caliander? That's what I thought. It's already included in it. And that's what we will receive a report back on.
Sorry, I didn't quite understand your question, councillor.
Um, well, create a framework. The framework is, could include rooftop gardening, balcony gardening and garden beds in common areas. And that's, we would receive the report back on.
So I think the nature of the, um, the original notice of motion that I proposed was to look at community gardens holistically, so not just to look at rooftop and, um, and neighbourhood gardens, but also look at, um, at, at community gardens in some of our new release areas, um, and other ways of, um, of kind of having a bit more of a, a broader approach to, to how we do it. Um, and so that's where that, that framework element of it comes in.
Okay, well, look, councillor, I think for, for, the, uh, process principles, um, you should move your wording as an amendment with a seconder. I think it's pretty clear, and we'll just put it up as an amendment, and then if it fails, the original motion goes through. So, we've got a seconder for the amendment?
Yeah, councillor Hagerty.
Thank you, councillor Hagerty. Um, all right, then, uh, did you wish to speak to your amendment, councillor Caliander?
Uh, yeah, look, I think, um, as I explained, um, the amendment's more related to having something of substance, um, in, that, that comes back to council. Obviously, there's, you know, a finite number of discussions that can be had between now and the end of the year, particularly given the nature of the, the situation we're in. Um, so it might be, you know, better use of, of time and resources to actually work towards, um, a framework or work towards a way of, of looking at community gardens a bit more holistically and how we can do them at council.
Okay, thank you. We've got the opposition to the amendment that wishes to speak? Okay, I'll put the amendment as moved by councillor Caliander. We'll need the voting sheet, George. Ah, there it is. Okay, um, councillor Hurd, are you voting for the amendment?
Madam Mayor, I just have a question.
Yes, what's your question?
If I, if I vote for, does that mean I'm voting for both?
No, you're voting for the change of wording that councillor Caliander. It's, you've got one that says encourage the community, which.
I know, but now are we only voting on the amendment, or do I look at the motion as a whole?
No, you're just looking at the wording that councillor Caliander's put up.
Okay, yes.
Yes, okay. Councillor Balut? Don't think he's here. Councillor Chitty?
Against, Mayor.
Against? That's against the person that just, thank you. Councillor Did?
Against.
Against. Councillor Hagerty?
Uh, for.
Councillor Hall?
Against.
Councillor Caliander, obviously for.
Yes, Madam Mayor, thank you.
Councillor Kinnib?
For.
Councillor Rhodes?
Um, against, Madam Mayor.
Councillor Sheldon?
For, thank you, Madam Mayor.
Oh, so we've got one, two, three.
It's up to you.
Yeah, I know. I'm thinking. Uh, the Paul D amendment, um, gives a framework which is a global strategic direction. Okay, carry the amendment so the motion drops. Thank you. The next item's on page eighty-five.
Move that way, thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, councillor. Seconded?
Madam Mayor?
Hold on a minute, hold on a minute, councillor Hurd. Seconded, sorry?
Happy to second it, Madam Mayor, with a question.
Okay, so.
Madam Mayor, I'm leaving the virtual room.
Okay, councillor Rhodes? Give you that particular, uh, councillor Sheldon, thank you. Right, yes, what is your question, councillor Hurd?
Uh, um, Madam Mayor, this is in regards to COM-oh-two, correct, at page eighty-five?
Yes.
Okay, Hindu Council of Australia Dipavali Festival of Life, recommended amounting seven thousand eight hundred dollars, which I'm very happy to support, but what if it does not go ahead? So I'd like this to be subject to, um, the festival actually going ahead.
It already says that in the summary.
We did that already.
Oh, David, sorry, I must have missed that. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
That's fine.
Paragraph, page eighty-five.
Okay, thank you, councillor Sheldon. Um, is there any opposition? I'll put it, those in favour, those against, a carrot carried. Could someone text councillor Caliander, please? Is she back? Yes, councillor Hidde, you've got your hand up.
Hello, I'm fine, thanks.
Oh, sorry.
Trying to remove it.
Okay. Okay, she's back. All right, page ninety-two is the next item on the agenda.
Um, happy to move the recommendation of council.
Councillor Rhodes moving. Seconded?
Happy to second it, Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Chitty. Is there any opposition? I'll put it, those in favour, those against, declare it carried. Next item's on page one-one-six.
Move that way, thank you, Madam Mayor.
Happy to second it, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. That's councillor Sheldon and councillor Rhodes. Is there any opposition?
Just a slide. Oh, no, go ahead.
Okay, I'll put it, those in favour, those against, declare it carried. Next item's on page one-two-four.
I'll move that way too, thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Sheldon.
Happy to second it, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Rhodes. Any opposition? None? I'll put it, those in favour, those against, declare it carried. Next one is one-twenty-seven.
Move that way, thank you, Madam Mayor.
You haven't got a choice.
Yes, there shouldn't be much debate about it.
Ah, no. Okay, thank you. So moved by councillor Sheldon and seconded by councillor Hagerty. Any opposition?
Madam Mayor, just a quick question.
Yep.
In point one, point four, it says to remove that meeting.
Yep.
Um, we, we might need it.
No, you won't, because the calendar of voting, um, goes up to the twenty-third of December. So the electoral commission has set a calendar where the announcements won't be made until the twenty-third of December.
So, sorry, Mayor, just on that, just in case it doesn't happen. So.
Council has the ability to remove meetings.
Yeah. Oh, okay, fair enough. Thank you, Mayor. Thanks.
It always has that right. Okay, any opposition? I'll put it, those in favour, those against, a carrot carried. the care, carried. The next item's on page one thirty.
Happy to move that, Madam Mayor.
Thank you councillor Rhodes.
I have a question.
You have a question? What is your question?
Uh, I would have sent it through earlier, but, uh, sorry, I didn't. Uh, page three hundred and seventy-three.
While people are turning, do we have a second up for this?
I'll sec- I'll second it.
Okay, thank you.
Um, so there's a comment in the proposed version. I know, I've lost my spot. Uh, we're about the benchmark. So remove three point six point one, and the comment says this, eh, basically get rid of the table and say we're going to follow the Bloomberg Osborne index. But it says delete and insert, but it hasn't inserted that. So if you read the performance benchmark section as proposed, there actually isn't any explicit benchmark mentioned.
Um, I'll ask the CEO for comment.
I'll ask Mr. Nadan to comment, please.
For the CEO of councillor, actually, um, the, in the comment side, we're saying, insert the bit there which is written there, the performance of councillor's investment will be assessed against the Bloomberg, um, Osborne Bank Bill, and then we'll just delete that. So that will be actually replaced by what's in the, in the comments column.
So shouldn't it have that text in, if this is the version we're going to approve, shouldn't it have that text in there for us to approve?
Yeah, that text, what, I mean, the comments is saying that we're going to include that in there. So delete what's there in red and include what's there in black.
Okay, so it will be included. Okay, well, can I request that going forward, we don't rely on what's in comments and we actually have what's proposed in the document in the document?
Yep, thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. Any opposition?
I just got a comment, uh, Madam Mayor, the, um, at page a hundred and thirty and the second last paragraph on that page, it talks about reducing the frequency that we review this policy from one year out to two years. With the way things are going at the moment, that kind of sits poorly with me. If anything, we should be reviewing it at least as frequently, if not more so, rather than less so. I'm not trying to amend the motion though, the, um, I'm just asking that staff be very vigilant, as Visio had said it will be, in relation to bringing the matter back before council, before the two years has expired, if the need ever arises, because in the present environment, uh, the, um, there's some prospect that will be the case.
Thank you councillor Shelton. Any other comments? All right, I'll put it, those in favour, those against, the care, carried. Next item's on page one, three, two.
Move the motion, Mayor.
What's your motion councillor?
Uh, just giving it to George. It's pretty much just to extend the term.
Extend the term, okay.
And then note, note the, uh, community representatives. So not much has changed. That's based on the advice I received yesterday from George. Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you. Moved by councillor Chitty, seconded by councillor Yard, that the term be extended.
Just the suggestion, given the conversation we just had about alteration to council meeting dates, do we tidy it up now in case it is pushed out again?
Yeah, actu- actually councillor, I, I did make that change and I ran it by, uh, the officers of council, actually states that in the, um, recommendation.
For the remainder of the council term. Okay.
Yeah, that, that would fix any, let's hope not. Any further changes to the calendar? Stop laughing, CEO. Okay, um, all right.
Didn't get a foreshadow.
You've got a foreshadowed motion? What, well, just hold your horses. Do you wish to speak? Well, hold that. Councillor Chitty, would you speak for your motion, please?
Mayor, just, just quickly, obviously the council representatives, there's no point going out now, it'd just be a waste of resources. Also, given that it is, if all goes well, only three months, because I think now we're in our, as of the fourth of September, I think we're in our third term of council in this term. So we're doing quite well. Uh, but we're hoping that the election is, uh, in, in December, saves all the paperwork. It's another three months. Let's just keep getting on with looking after our residents instead of worrying who's going to be deputy mayor.
Thank you. Can I just add for the interest of those who may be watching, the OLG have made it very clear that the committees would stay put until such time as there are elections. So that is a directive from the OLG. Um, yes, okay. Now councillor Haggerty, you wish to speak against the motion?
Um, I agree with most of it, but I just think, eh, if it is extended beyond September, we should probably, eh, decide whether, eh, we should probably have a vote by December. So, you know, three, yeah, basically, uh, we'd be the same except you'd get rid of the bit that says for the remainder of the council term. If it's been extended, then council will have a vote at the December meeting.
N- no dramas, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. All right, well, I'll put it to a vote. Um, George, can we have the voting sheet, please?
Sorry, I'll, I'll, I'll just change that to fit in line with, uh, councillor Haggerty's. So till the fourth of December, yeah.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, yeah, no, no issue, Mayor. I was just trying to tidy it up, but.
No, that's all right.
Yeah, no dramas.
But can we, can we just state that if the point three, um, if, if the council election date is postponed again, then there'll be a, an election of deputy mayor at the December meeting. It stops us, stops us having this problem again.
Yeah, no, no issue.
Okay. Are you happy with that as the mover and second up?
Yes, Mayor, no issue.
All right, thank you. Uh, voting sheet, please, George.
Is there actually a December meeting?
No, it says if the council election is postponed.
How do we just take, got rid of the December meeting anyway?
No, if the, um, if the election has changed again, which we're all hoping and praying it isn't, um...
Then we will need to have another motion to state the December meeting.
Exactly.
At the moment, there is no December meeting.
But we can, we can call an urgent meeting, an extraordinary meeting if we need to, councillor Sheldon, it's not, it's not a big issue. Okay, moving down with the voting, um, um, there's just me on the list, so that's a help. Uh, councillor Yard, you're voting for the motion? Of course you are, you're seconding it. Um, councillor Balut, he's, he seems to be absent. Councillor Chitty, you're voting as well for. Councillor Did?
Four.
Or councillor Haggerty?
Four.
Councillor Hall?
Four.
Councillor Caliander?
In favour, Mayor.
Councillor Kinnip? He's there, I heard him earlier. We'll move on. Councill- yeah, there we are, see? Yeah, see? Councillor Rhodes?
Yes.
Councillor Kinnip, yes as well. Councillor Sheldon?
Four, thank you, Madam Mayor.
Okay, declare it carried. Next item is on page one forty-six.
Can I ask some, a couple of questions, Mayor?
Certainly.
Thanks. Um, obviously there's carryovers, we normally get that. Sorry, just on page, I only just picked this up late this evening, so it's not trying to be painful here. Page one fifty-one, um, the, the courthouse is mentioned twice for the same amount, or close to the same amount, of three hundred and thirteen thousand, which I believe then would throw out the figures. So it's mentioned in property assets and it's also mentioned in property services. So if that could just sort of be...
Is that the same amount repeated?
Well, gen- general fund's got three thirteen in both columns, but then in property assets, it's got another nearly twenty-seven, uh, twenty-nine thousand in property reserve. So it could be just typo or something that I'm missing.
Well, I'll ask the CEO to ask the pertinent council officer.
Mr. O'Ton.
Uh, through the CEO, councillor, I believe that, uh, that's an error. When you look at the project number, it's exact same project account, uh, we will, we will fix it, uh...
Yeah, thanks, and...
Thank you for being gracious.
Yeah, yeah, it's just to balance off the numbers. In, in relation to the projects, we've got a few projects here that are delayed by COVID. Um, given that these were on the schedule for what I can read the last financial year, but now moving into this one, the year programmes, is it just COVID or we got other issues with these delays?
Uh, through the CEO.
Last CEO.
Mr. O'Ton.
Thank you, CEO. Uh, thank you councillor for that. Uh, there's been a, uh, I guess a, a, a range of, uh, reasons that have impacted the delivery of projects. The COVID-related impact, eh, has particularly impacted the delivery of, uh, supplier materials, uh, either from international overseas or, or from other suppliers. Uh, but if you point me to the specific project, then I can maybe be able to give you a bit more information.
Uh, courthouse, thirty-five Scott Street fit out, to name a couple. Oh, sorry, former, former courthouse, says upgrade works have been delayed due to COVID. Thirty-five Scott Street fit out, works delayed due to COVID. Um, so just, just, I suppose, those two projects.
Through, through the CEO, can I have this redirected to the, uh, director, uh, property, please? Sure.
Mr. Morgan?
Sure, um, through, through the, through the CEO, I'll have to take that one on notice, um, councillor, um, respond back.
No worries. Couple more if I can, Mayor, if you don't mind.
Yes, certainly.
Uh, property assets, uh, thirty-three Moore Street, um, it's mentioned twice. Um, in the bottom one, full compliance with the current BCA for existing buildings not considered reasonable or practical. Um, if it's BCA, and then if we look on top of that, there's the building code as one, um, sh- should we not be complying with the BCA?
Ask the CEO for the pertinent council officer to make a reply.
Mr. Morgan?
Yes, um, again councillor, as through, uh, through the, through the CEO, um, I'll need to get some more detail on that, but initially, as a, as a comment, yes, we should be, um, should be, uh, complying with the BCA, but let me take it on notice and come back with more detail.
No problem. And I, sorry, just one more to Mr. Raj, if I can.
Yes.
The, sorry, page one fifty, Austral Lepperton North Drainage Corridor Master Plan. Was that not looked at as part of the flood studies? Sorry, and I, and I couldn't be involved in the flood study report, so I wasn't, um, couldn't ask questions there. But it's, there's an eighty-seven, or just under eighty-seven thousand dollar amount for a drainage corridor master plan. Can I just get a little bit more info on that, if you don't mind? If you've got it on hand, if not, it's fine for later.
Th- through the CEO, uh, absolutely councillor. So we've got, uh, the, the work that has happened has been flood modelling, so looking at the, the size and capacity of the drainage channel. This is about, uh, greening, uh, the, the, the drainage channels and naturalising the drainage channels. So this is a master plan, uh, for, for the landscaping and, and creating, uh, higher quality riparian corridor. And that work, uh, uh, has been delayed for a range of reasons and, and we're hoping that, uh, by, uh, by the middle of next year, we'll have it completed. But essentially it is vegetation management, playing landscaping, riparian corridors, uh, to look at beautification and, and embellishment works.
And sorry, eh, sorry, if I threw, Ma- Mayor, if I may, just one further to that. Based on the comments from councillor Ha last time in relation to, does that take that into account?
Absolutely, yes.
Thank you very much. Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you. Any other co- comments?
Uh, I've got a question.
Yes, what is it councillor Rhodes?
Just that, um, it says the spread of COVID nineteen does not mean that a force major clause, clause will be operative, or that a contract will be frustrated. How can we consider that in regards, we don't know when COVID, or what is going to be the total effect of COVID, when it's going to end or, or whatever. I was just a little bit confused about that because, um, it could, could create greater issues, we just don't know.
I don't know whether they can answer that question councillor, but I will ask the CEO to ask the pertinent council officer for a comment.
It's a clause, a for- a force majeure clause in the, uh, in the copy.
Councillor Rhodes, can I ask you to point us to the, the, the actual wording that you're referring to?
Yeah, it's the capital contracts and expenditure budgets. I haven't got the page number, unfortunately.
That's probably the next report councillors.
I think that maybe a...
I think you've jumped ahead of yourself councillor. Thank you councillor Chitty, you're totally right. You're in the next section.
Oh, I am. So sorry about that.
Thank you. All right, I'm going to ask for a mover and a second up for this motion, for this.
I'll move it, Madam Mayor.
Thank you councillor Caliander. Seconded?
Yeah.
Me, Kinnip.
Thank you councillor Kinnip. I wish the helicopters would go away. Okay, uh, any opposition? I'll move it, those in favour, those against, the care, carried. Next item's on one, five, three, and this is the item you were talking about.
This is the item, Madam Mayor.
Mayor, can I ask whoever moves whatever and have the discussion that after all that, we do go in a closed session to dis- to discuss force de majeure and contracts and legal issues and everything else?
Well, we'd move that. We're going to go into closed session anyway, so we can divert this one if you wish, um, to closed session if you feel that way.
Yeah, thanks. I, I, I would like that, but it's up to council, obviously, Mayor.
Yeah, well, I, as a chair, I'm comfortable with that going into confidential for all those reasons. So I'll just write on myself a note. Somebody remind me though. Okay, well, that item will be moved to confidential. The next item's on page one, five, six.
Happy to move point one, Mayor.
Point one. Okay, just letting you know. Pages are stuck together for something. Okay, thank you for saying tomorrow. So you're moving point one, seconded?
Oh, foreshadow.
Yeah.
I'm happy to second that, Madam Mayor.
Thank you councillor Yard. Do you wish to speak to your motion councillor Chitty? You wish to speak to your motion?
No, I'm good, Mayor, just move one more.
Anybody wish to speak against it?
I'll just say this much, Madam Mayor, the, um, if paragraph two is not moved, then that simply leaves a vacuum and the existing motions in relation to climate change, climate action plan, et cetera, et cetera, as remain on the books as is.
Okay, thank you. I'll take that as speaking against. Anybody wish to speak for? Anybody wish to speak against?
Uh, I'll speak against.
Yes, go ahead.
Um, I think it's important we develop a climate action plan, if only for the reason that the ra- uh, the price of, uh, renewables is, is coming down at a rate of knots and, and we should be looking at ways to, uh, save rate payers money. So, you know, I understand the climate action plan has, uh, as part of it, a, uh, a strategy to get as many, uh, solar panels and renewable energy on councillors' books and on councillors' buildings. So, um, I know that saved money in the past and will save money in the future. So let's have a strategy, let's have a plan, let's have a structured document which tells us how to save rate payers money.
Okay, thank you. Do you want your reply councillor Hachidi?
Mayor, I'd be, just really quickly, I'd be happy to support any initiative that shows, uh, savings to the rate payer, if it can be justified. So until an initiative is put forward that says this is how much the rate payer is going to save, um, well then I unfortunately can't support it. So, uh, happy with point one. If councillor Haggerty obviously is foreshadowing, um, that's great. Uh, but if initiatives like these are put forward that show a cost savings, I'd be more than happy to jump on board.
Okay, thank you. Um, George, can we have the voting sheet, please? Thank you councillor Yard, you're probably voting for, because you seconded it.
Yes.
Councillor Balut, I'll call your name out again, but I don't, I don't think he's here. Councillor Chitty, you're for, I would gather. Councillor Did?
Four.
Thank you. Councillor Haggerty?
Against.
Councillor Hall?
Against.
Councillor Caliander?
Against, Madam Mayor.
Councillor Kinnip?
Against, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Councillor Rhodes?
Yes, I'll go against, Madam Mayor.
Councillor Shelton?
Against, thank you, Madam Mayor.
The motion is lost. Um, would you, what is your foreshadowed motion councillor?
Mayor, it's as per the book.
Okay, second up?
I'll second that, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Do you wish to talk to your motion councillor?
Yeah, and look, I'm, in the spirit of, uh, collegiality that this council is renowned for, I'm, I'm even happy to put in a point three that says, um, uh, you know, council come back with, uh, a report in, in a few months, uh, telling us, uh, about climate initiatives that will save money.
Okay, thank you. So the motion is... So the motion is what's in the book, plus a point three. Does anybody wish to speak against the motion? Councillor Chitty, you have your hand up?
Mayor, I thank councillor Hagerty for actually making that point, um. In relation to the initiatives, not initiatives that save money, it's easier to put something forward that says you'll be saving money. But actual rule hard data that shows that we will save money.
Okay.
Um, and I, I, I think it's, and I'm sort of speaking against but for here, um, yes, totally understand that we, everyone's moving. In that direction, uh, but at what cost? And yes, there'll be the argument at what cost if you don't. Uh, but at the moment, um, something that we can measure is dollars, and I'd like to see something that shows it is the dollars. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other speakers for the motion? Any speakers against? Do you wish to write a reply councillor?
No, just, um, happy to see a report that comes back and, you know, when clear things like LED lights and streetlights and solar panels and a whole host of things. Uh, it'd be good to see some hard data as councillor Hachidi has requested.
Okay, thank you. George, can we have the voting sheet please? My hands still up, thank you. Thank you councillor Yard, do you voting for or against?
I'll vote for, thanks.
Well, councillor Balut, not here, councillor Chitty?
Still can't buy for me, sorry.
Okay, against. Councillor Deed?
For.
Councillor Hagerty?
I'm for.
Councillor Hall?
For.
Councillor Caliander?
In favour, Madam Mayor.
Councillor Canib?
Same.
Councillor Rhodes?
Yes, for, Madam Mayor.
Councillor Sheldon?
For, thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, coun, it's, uh, obviously the, the resolution is passed, thank you. Next item is the committee reports.
Accept them as a whole, Madam Mayor, or move them as a whole.
Yes, some.
No, can, can we pull out traffic?
Wait a minute, we can just get this, we'll get this motion up and then you can pull the ones you want out, okay? Councillor Rhodes moving as a whole, seconded?
You can withdraw that, Madam Mayor, if they've got, if they've got issues, just.
No, 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 it's okay, they want to pull some out. So councillor Rhodes moving as a whole, and who's seconding?
I'll second that.
Thank you councillor Yard. Now, they're moved as a whole with the exception of which ones?
And video two.
Two, which is two, and councillor Hachidi, you have some?
Same here, same.
Okay, so only two? Bless you. Okay, all right then, I'll put the committees as a whole with the exception of two, those in favour, those against, carried. Committee item two, which is on page one sixty nine.
Yep, so as per the recommendation, but we change item five.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, just, um. Remove the, take out the bit about, well, we don't approve, doesn't approve the road closures until, um. Uh, such time as other improvements are made. Oh, sorry, number six, sorry.
Okay.
Flynn Avenue, it's there twice.
So, Flint, num, item six where it says proposed traffic restrictions through the Western Sydney Parklands?
Yep, does not approve road closures until such time as, um, other roadworks in the area are completed.
Okay, got a second up?
Actually, I'll, I may.
Thank you councillor Rhodes. Roadworks are completed. Wish to speak to your motion councillor?
Yeah, look, um, I, I understand that there are issues with dumping there, and there are issues with speeding there. Um, but if you close the roads that are being proposed, which I think is Flynn, Southern Cross and Maccaiver. You effectively only have one route east, uh, in that direction, and that's fifteenth avenue, and we've been over and over and over the issue in fifteenth avenue. Uh, the problem isn't Flynn Avenue, the problem's fifteenth avenue, um, we need to fix fifteenth avenue. Uh, and, you know, by, by trying little things here and there around the place, we're just going to funnel more traffic into fifteenth avenue.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Chitty, you have your hand up?
Thanks, Mayor, fully support councillor Hagerty on that one. Item eleven. Um, also which tees on to fifteenth avenue, no right turn, which has been a right turn forever and a day. Um. It is going for traffic in New South Wales for endorsement, that's great. Um, but do we get to see actually where people are supposed to go to be able to then turn right onto fifteenth avenue, and then the impacts it's going to have? Wherever they're going to end up before it goes to transport for New South Wales?
Okay, I'll ask the CEO whether Charles is available to comment.
Uh, Mister Smith, is Charles available?
He's not today, but I can answer that through the CEO. Point two. Um, of that says a traffic management plan on the proposed right turn movements being prepared and submitted to transport for endorsement, so that will actually. Determine which, um, alternatives are around. Um, we could, if councillors are wanting to see that again, it could be reported back to the traffic committee. Um, for, for information, um, and for an ultimate decision on that if so desired by council.
I, I would prefer that for the obvious reasons that councillors know the area rather than transport for New South Wales. Um, and then just to work out some, some issues on that, that's what I'd prefer, but if it happens, it happens, it doesn't. Um, on page one seventy two in general business. And councillor Hagerty through you, Mayor, may be able to, or someone else, GB one. Was, was that ever on community consultation? Because it says here councillor Hagerty, um, received objections and then it was shut down. But has it been a community consultation?
No, it hasn't.
All right, so can I, and councillor Hagerty, I acknowledge that you've probably received objections, but there's also been a lot of support for something like that happening. To ease off the traffic, um, that, that goes through that area. Can we get that out on community consultation and seek feedback from the whole community? Whilst I respect my fellow councillor, and if he received a couple of objections, that's great, but can we let the community actually have a say in this one?
Well, my, my suggestion would be to reword that particular one to, uh, at the end of all the minutes. Um, make it known that the council would like that to happen.
If the mover and seconder are happy with that, I, I think it's just important to have community feedback on, on this. Um, there is that small link that is not constructed, um, and it will make a massive difference if it was constructed.
I think, yeah.
At the end of the day, with the community, get it out there, let's seek their feedback, and if their majority says no, well, then majority says no.
Mm-hmm. The community consultation regarding item. GB one. Okay, so can that be added in, please? Somebody had that in, did? Community consultation take place with item GB one? Okay, is there any other issues relating to this report? We have a move and a seconder? Councillor Hagerty moving?
Happy to second it.
Councillor, sorry councillor Deed, seconding, I'm going to put it, those in favour, those against, carried. I've got the footsteps of two teenagers in the hallway killing each other, I apologise for any noise. Okay, moving along to questions on page one eighty two. In the name of councillor Rhodes.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. I thank council for the response and the information. Um, and, uh, noting the information. In the, uh, in their response, it's obvious that off-leash dog parks do serve a purpose. I note that, um. You know, that it's recommended that one, at least one off-leash. Area in every subject, site, subject to site availability. And I note that the, uh, the ones that have been already identified. The closest one is Lieutenant Cantello Reserve at Hemmingville. Um. Really, that's the closest, closest one to the area. Of South Park, Engle Park, the Homestead Park and Black Muscate Park. So, Madam Mayor, I would still like to, uh, put up that motion. Um. And it's for council to consider an off-leash, receive a note the report. And for council to consider. To construct an off-leash dog park in the Chipping Norton area. In any of the available parks like South Park, Engle Park, the Homestead Park or Black Muscate Park.
Okay, do you have a second for that motion?
Happy to second that, Mayor.
Thank you councillor Chitty. Did, uh, anybody wish to speak against it?
I won't speak again, I will speak against.
Okay.
Um, in the report, it says, in addition, the provision of, in the provision of off-leash. Off-leash dog park areas is being considered as part of the planning and design of the following, Homestead Park, Chipping Norton. So it's redundant to have that last bit, or you've just got to go, he's receiving notes the report, it's noted in the report.
Whereabouts is that, um?
Right there on the screen, number two.
The Homestead Park, Chipping Norton, future off-leash area is being investigated through the Georges River Parklands. Excellent, fine, I didn't see that.
Okay, so it's redundant, you're happy to withdraw?
Uh, it's being considered in the, um, parklands.
Yeah.
In Georges River Parklands, no, that's not.
Part of the plan. I remember when we had no off-leash, um, dog park.
Very, very popular.
Yes, they're very popular. Okay, the next item is on page one eighty four, also in the name of councillor Rhodes.
Okay, once again, I thank council for their report. Um. It did raise further questions for me. Um, because. The information that was provided, um. Like in the first paragraph of page number one eighty six. Um, it's, it's telling us that the proposed subdivision will result in significant non-compliance with clause. Four point one of the LEP two thousand and eight minimum lot size. Is the development still non-compliant?
I'll ask the CEO for the appropriate council staff member.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Mister Smith.
Thank you, through the CEO, yes, the proposal was approved with that non-compliance by the Independent Planning Commission.
And so is that, would, would that be all the same, David, like on page one eighty seven, the top of the paragraph? Is the development an industrial estate or an intermodal development? There was questions around that and the difference between what is necessary for each of them, still current. And, um, the third point, same page, does the claim. Exception to the existing development standard, that's the smaller minimum lot size. Facilitate a subdivision of the MPW site as envisaged and approved still directly. Contravene condition three twenty six A. Um. Does that still, does council still have a concern regarding all of that?
Lasted CEO to, um.
Uh, thank you, through the CEO, um, I'd have to actually look at the conditions of consent that the IPC actually put on. The consent, my understanding was in supporting the proposal with that clause four point six variation. There was a management plan that was required to be prepared to ensure that the intermodal west side was still operating as intermodal and not. Um, which we were concerned about, which could be then sold off, so my understanding is it. Still needs to be run as an intermodal, but I'll take that on notice and get the actual conditions of the IPC report.
And council objected to. The, uh, transport impacts and road networks, uh, impacts in the Liverpool LGA. Council still has those. Concerns.
I'll ask the CEO for the.
That's page one eighty six, the traffic comments.
Mister Smith, can you, can you confirm that?
We still hold concerns with the traffic impacts, but of course, we're working with both intermodal company and Transport for New South Wales. On the road improvements that have been conditioned, so that includes the Moorbank Avenue upgrade and the upgrades to the M five motorway, but. Of course, we are still concerned about the potential traffic impacts. So we'll work through them to try and minimise those impacts in accordance with the conditions of consent.
And the VPA, signed with the Transport New South Wales for contributions for improvement works on arterial roads. Does it adequately address the needs of Liverpool?
Smith.
Uh, the VPA is the funding mechanism to be able to provide those road upgrades, so yes, it will go quite a long way to addressing transport impacts. Uh, but once again, I can, I can get some further information and provide that to councils on exactly what that VPA is proposing. Uh, and any residual traffic impacts that we're still concerned about.
Um, Madam Mayor, I wonder if we could, um. Allow for updates on this, uh, to be presented to the Moorbank Intermodal Committee. Um. Updates moving forward, so we know, uh, what council has been able to negotiate. Uh, obviously, we've still got the concerns that were there, I'm presuming. No, no, that's okay, that's, that's about all I can say in, in this.
Thank you.
So can I propose a motion, Madam Mayor, that there is a update on the, um. How council has resolved the, um, objections. Um. To the Moorbank Precinct West Stage three SSD one oh four three one. To the Moorbank Intermodal Committee on a regular basis.
Do you have a second, councillor?
Happy to second it.
Councillor Hall, seconding. Do you wish to speak to your motion councillor?
Well, yes, Madam Mayor, just in that, um, you know, council obviously has got these objections and, um. It's, it's, it's relevant to the Liverpool constituents that they are being addressed in some way. And, uh, you know, quite happy if council can address them. Um, but, you know, we, we, we need to know, uh, how they're being addressed and, um. And, uh, so all it's asking is that a, a report be provided to the Moorbank Intermodal to. Committee to, um, address that need.
Thank you. Anybody wish to speak against? Okay, then can we have the voting, um, sheet please, George? Thank you. Councillor Yard, are you voting for this?
Yes.
Thank you. Councillor Chitty?
For, Mayor.
Councillor Deed?
For, Madam Mayor.
Councillor Hagerty?
Can I just have another look at the wording again, please?
That there is an update. You're for or against?
For.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Hagerty, councillor Hall?
For.
Councillor Caliander?
For.
Councillor Canib?
For.
Councillor Rhodes?
Yes, for.
Councillor Sheldon?
Oh, thank you, Madam Mayor.
Uh, we got you all, yeah, I declare carried. Next item is on page two hundred.
Yes, Madam Mayor, um, once again, I thank council for the, um. For the advice that has been given and, uh, I would like to just, I've still tried to find it, I have difficulty finding it, I haven't found it yet. On the in, internet, the council internet, so I was wondering if we could, uh, put up a motion to move. Their recommendation that they would be able to do, which is provide a separate tab to be placed on the internet page. For legal reports to allow ease of access. for legal reports to allow ease of access.
Yes.
Perhaps someone could email you the link.
That might help.
Got a second for that motion?
Happy to second it.
Thank you, Councillor Hall. Councillor Rhodes, you, I think you've already in a sense had your speech for. Anybody wish to speak against? Anybody wish to speak against?
May I, I'm going to speak against.
Okay, go ahead, Councillor, Councillor Hagerty, sorry.
Um, yep, times, times are tough, budget tight, um. Yeah, based on my experience as an I T project manager, that's probably a couple of days' work of development testing. Let, let's save a few thousand dollars and email councillor Rhodes the link.
Okay, thank you, councillor. You've got your right to apply, councillor Rhodes.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. Look, I think that it's a very, uh, a narrow view. It's not only for my benefit, but also for other councillors that will probably be joining, uh, the, uh, other council in the new, new term of council. It's just that, um, you know, this, this would be a simple matter. It's not going to cost thousands of dollars. It's just simply providing a separate tab so that you can find that legal, um, information as required without the necessity of somebody asking for a link to be emailed to them. I think that it's just, um, uh, for the better ongoing benefit for councillors that are not with us as yet. I think that would be a, uh, a good, good move. So I'm just, leave it at that, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Um, George, can you put up the voting thing, please?
May, just, you could take this one on notice, but can we, um, get sound assessment of how much this is going to cost?
Thank you. Councillor Yar?
I'll vote for.
Councillor Chitty?
Against.
Councillor Deed?
Against.
Councillor Hagerty?
Against, ma'am.
Councillor Hall?
For.
Councillor Caliander?
Against.
Councillor Conib?
Against.
Councillor Rhodes?
For.
Councillor Sheldon?
Against.
The motion is lost. Thank you. The next item.
Sorry, ma'am, before we come on, but, uh, can we actually just include a link to the legal report be emailed to our councillors?
Yes, certainly. I'm sure we can do that, councillor. Next item's on page two oh two. In the name of councillor Hall.
Thank you, ma'am. I, I will await the replies.
With bated breath, I'm sure. You're next as well, on page two oh three.
Yes, I think I have three of them.
Okay. Uh, the next one is waiting as well, and then we've got councillor Chitty, who is in the waiting as well.
Yeah, ma'am, can I just quickly, and I thank you, I'll wait till next month for that, but just clarify something.
Yep.
I, I then do take it through you, ma'am, to the C E O, that a distribution centre is permissible in the B two zone?
I'll ask, um, the C E O to get the appropriate staff member.
Mister Smith, can you provide the clarification, please?
Thank you, through the C E O. On my screen at the moment, but I don't believe a distribution centre is permissible in the B two zone. But I'll take that on notice and, um, come back to you on that. I can bring it up very shortly.
Sorry, Amy. Ha- happy for these to go on notice as well. So what happens in the case if a retail centre becomes a distribution centre? Do we then do compliance action?
Well, we won't have any compliance officers, so there you go. Sorry, couldn't help that. Sorry.
Through the C E O, I can, I can answer that. Um, if, if a, um, prohibited land use is underway and we get a complaint, then we'll investigate that and if needed, take appropriate compliance action.
S- sorry, ma'am, can I just, I, I, I think, I think everyone knows where I'm going with this. And I'm sort of just trying not to go there because I'm not sure if I can ask. But do we know of any cases where things have shut down and gone to distribution centres and have we taken any action?
Well, can I ask a different question to get?
But there one question that is.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, councillor.
Hold your horses, councillor. Yes, can, um, somebody assist councillor Chitty with his query?
Happy to, Madam Mayor. Uh, I'll ask the general counsel, uh, to comment on that. You're on you, champ.
Somebody had to have that said to them tonight, didn't they? It had to be me. First time today in this week, so I'm doing well. Um, uh, through the C E O, uh, thank you for your question, councillor. I can indicate there have not been, um, to date in relation to people closing their premises and then fitting into the definition of a distribution centre. By legal definition of a distribution centre.
Sorry, ma'am, can I, and I'm sure councillor Hagerty's sort of going down the same path. I've got to ask the question.
Okay.
Cecil Hills Centre was closed down, became a online delivery store. I take it then that's permissible in the legal definition?
Miss Channel.
Thank you. Uh, through the C E O, uh, the shutting down of the Cecil Hills store to go to allow home delivery and click and collect does not fit the definition of a distribution centre. The legal definition of a distribution centre.
So it's the click and collect component that made it s- still retail, is that my understanding?
No. It is not just the click and collect, uh, part that made it then fit into retail.
But they are doing click and collect.
They are now. Um, to my knowledge, yes, doing, uh, click and collect.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. Councillor Hagerty?
Uh, yeah, I, I asked my click and collect question.
Okay, good, uh, click, click, we're done. Thank you very much. Um, so moving on.
Apologies, Madam Mayor, if I may, uh, through the C E O, just add to that, it may be boot to car. Um, as opposed to entering the store and doing click and collect. So I apologise, um, for that. I just thought I'd clarify.
Yes, they've got the same at many other places as well.
Yes.
Okay, thank you for that. Moving on now, we're notices of motion. Do we have any presentation from councillors? No? Okay, addendum book, page five hundred and thirty-one.
I would like to move a motion.
Yes, councillor?
Um, it was emailed to George earlier today by the relevant director, David Smith.
Okay, notes the gateway termination and subsequent alterations for the Liverpool L E P two thousand and eight amendment sixty-three and the results of public exhibition and due consultation. Notes that council has not been authorised as the local plan-making authority for the planning proposal. Final decision will be made by the Minister of Planning and Public Spaces or Delegate. Notes the assessment of the revised planning proposal undertaken by Hill P D A and its recommendations, including reducing the scale of the proposal to approximately ninety-eight thousand square metres G F A. And notes the need, oops, notes the need in Middleton Grange has been identified in the Liverpool Local Strategic Planning Statement and Liverpool Centres and Corridors Strategy. Five supports the revised planning proposal lodged by the proponent approximately at one hundred and thirteen thousand square metres G F A and the public benefits offered by the proponent to support the planning proposal and development of the town centre at Middleton Grange. Six notes, a draft planning agreement in being negotiated with the proponent on which is required to be reported to council endorsement and publicly exhibited to provide for the following public benefits, construction of an open plant space, park and embellishment works to the area designed as Park Three with a minimum of two thousand five hundred square metres. Park will remain in private ownership of the developer, but with public access easement. B dedication of part two to council, part two is the land not currently owned by the council but is proposed to be resigned to R E one, public recreation. And C, construction of a signalised intersection of Main Street and Flynn Avenue and the intersection for the proposed, new proposed access lane and Flynn Avenue. And D, um, construction of an upgrade to the Cow Past Road intersection, Flynn Avenue from Quodis Boulevard to Elm Street to, as a widened four-lane road within the existing road reserve in consultation with council. E, construction of land upgrade and services for the Southern Cross Avenue between the western boundary of the land to Middleton Grange Primary School. F, construction of the culvert and drainage works approved under D A sixty-four stroke two oh oh seven stroke C. And the monetary contribution of, um, eight million dollars. Um, and seven, forwards the revised planning proposal to the Department of Planning, Industry, Environment and Recommendation that the revised planning proposal proceeds in its current form, subject to the completion of the following. A, the execution of the planning agreement that establishes a secure mechanism to deliver the proposed public open space road upgrades and monetary contribution. B, the finalisation of the amendment of part two point A Middleton Grange of the Liverpool Development Control Plan two thousand and eight. And C, the amendment of the proposed land reservation acquisition map in the L E P to rectify the inconsistency with the Liverpool Contributions Plan two thousand and eight. Moved by councillor A R, do we have a second up?
I'll second it, Madam Mayor.
Madam Mayor.
Hold on, hold on. Councillor A R, would you wish to speak to your motion?
Madam Mayor, um, I would. So I've put this forward today because we all know that the minister has the final decision on this. And my concern is that the people of Liverpool, namely the people that live in and around Middleton Grange and the surrounding areas, are going to miss out on having a decent, good development that is going to service them and the surrounding areas, provide a medical centre which is desperately needed. It's going to provide housing and development to meet the growth need, namely with the new airport coming along. Sydney currently has a housing crisis. We need local and regional infrastructure. And I believe that it's in the best interest of the community that this moves forward and that this moves forward with, um, the planning agreements outlined in the motion, which are also outlined in the agenda. So we just, I just had them added, um, just basically as an outline because there's something that is needed. And whether this proposal gets approved by the minister at one hundred and thirteen thousand square metres or Hill P D A's, um, what did they want? Sorry, I'm just looking at my notes. Or Hill P D A's ninety-eight thousand square metres. My concern is that the community gets the benefits. Um, I would also like to reiterate that this area is zoned already for six hundred dwellings. And currently, the proponent is asking for six hundred and seventy-one dwellings, which I think is pretty good value with the contribution that our community will be getting from the proponent. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Have we got a speaker against?
Not a speaker against, but just a request. Um, this is a pretty important motion. Um, you know, I think we all want it down centre. And I'd like to also think we all want a funding mechanism in place. This has a fair bit of history to it. It's very complex, um, and I just think in the interest of making sound decision-making, I'd like to take this one into confidential and as a committee behold, just so we can have a bit of a, more of a free-flowing conversation here.
As the chair, it's been moved and seconded, but I'm comfortable. Oh, that's interesting. Um, have to meet the requirements of going in under section ten. So I'll just ask for advice. Would this particular, um, motion meet the requirements of going into confidential session? I'll just ask for advice from the C E O.
Miss Channel, can you provide that advice? Can we scroll back up to the top of?
Thank you.
May I, please?
Thank you. If you can just scroll down. Thank you. If you can continue scrolling. Thank you. Thank you. In order to go into, I, I'm not sure what, uh, other discussion, uh, thank you if I can answer through the C E O, what other discussions, uh, sought to be had. So it's a little bit difficult to answer the question. So I'll answer it in terms of what is currently on the paper. Um, in order, as I'm sure we're all aware, to go into, uh, ten A, uh, I cannot see how that, uh, would come into the, any of the criteria.
Uh, so, um, my line of questioning would be around what's being offered in terms of a monetary contribution and, and where council's negotiating position is on that and what, what other options I think are achievable.
So you're talking about commercial and confidence discussion?
And point, point G would refer to that, Madam Mayor.
Okay.
If we scroll up to, uh, just up the page, I think, point G there.
Ye- yes, where it's got the, uh, certain comment of a contribution. So if the, if we are then, it could, you can then rely on, uh, ten D that it could prejudice.
Yep.
Or con- or confer a commercial advantage on them.
No worries. Thank you very much for that advice. So I'll move that, uh, as the chair, that this will be dealt with in confidential under section ten D. Thank you. And the mover and seconder will stay as the mover and seconder enclosed.
Yep, I'm happy for, for that to happen, but can I just see clarity as to why? Is that because the eight million dollars is there?
Yes.
I'm confused.
The reason we're going into confidential is the councillor has requested it because he wants a discussion in closed session about the financial arrangements, which is, brings us into section ten of the Act, which is also, it's ten D, which is, that's why I asked for the opinion.
Okay, I, the relevant director and myself had a brief conversation about this. So the eight million dollars would be relevant and would be the monetary contribution if the thirteen thousand square metres gets approved by the minister. Whereas if it does not and the, um, sorry, the ninety-eight thousand square metres gets approved, then that would be, that would be renegotiated or a- adjusted is the correct word to use. It would be adjusted.
And that's why we need to go into confidential.
I suggest you hold your thoughts for that debate in the closed session, but there'll be probably other issues that will be, um.
Yep, sure, no worries. Thanks, ma'am.
Next item is on page five five one of your addendum book. Have we got a mover and a seconder?
Trying to find where we are, sorry.
Page five five one.
Oh, yeah.
In your addendum.
Happy to second that, ma'am.
You're moving or seconding, councillor Chitty?
Rent relief, moving.
I'll se- second that if the mover's happy to take on board a suggestion.
Well, I think you'd better say it now or forever hold your peace.
Um, that, uh, well, a couple of things. Um, does the mover have any a- additional things?
You, you, yeah, go.
You go first, your, your motion.
He's a mover.
That's all right, councillor Hagerty. I'm, sorry, ma'am, through you. Councillor Hagerty, go for it. You spoke first.
No, you're the mover, councillor Chitty. What is your motion?
I'm moving the book with councillor Hagerty's change as Madam Mayor.
The seconder has an amendment to the original motion. Councillor Hagerty, what are the added bit?
Uh, I'd like to add, add in here that, um, the discounts be, uh, the discounts be funded through a reduction in the waste management levy.
That's probably for the next motion, councillor.
Oh, am I? Oh, jeez. Ah, rent.
Don't get, don't get excited.
Sorry.
You're in the rental relief.
I've done a councillor Rhodes, sorry.
You're in rental relief. Rental relief, councillor, page five five one.
I'll just, I couldn't, I'll second that and happy to leave it as it is.
A point of order against.
So withdrawn, with, withdrawn. Withdrawn, I meant, meant to say I did the same thing. I, I withdraw and I meant to say I, I did the same thing as councillor.
Thank you. Your apology is, um,
Not accepted, but.
It's accepted by the Chair, councillor, and I rule on points of order. Thank you. Okay, we have a move and a second. Anybody wish to speak against it? Thank you. Okay, we have a move and a second out. Anybody wish to speak against it? You wish to speak for it, councillor Haggerty, given you're the mover?
All would be.
All right. I'll put those in favour, those against, declare it carried. Then we have presentations. Any presentations?
Sorry, Madam Mayor, just to clarify, just to confirm, was that previous motion recorded as being unanimous?
Well, it was moved. There was no objection, but um if if somebody wishes to have their objection noted, they should speak up now.
No, I just wanted to make sure it was um recorded as voting unanimously.
Wish that, that can go ahead, no problem at all.
Thank you, Madam.
Thank you. The next item's on page two oh five, in the name of councillor Rhodes.
Um yes, once again, I thank the advice given and accept the report it's requested in the August norm. And congratulate council in providing the information one month earlier than what it was requested. Um I note that doesn't happen very often and I appreciate it. I do have a few questions. I note that um the animal shelter is an operational matter. But does that mean that councillors? It's not possible for councillors to request consideration by council for possible need. Of a policy regarding the legal contract of sale currently used by council. Um. I just need to have that clarified for the, in the first instance.
What is your question, councillor Rhodes? Can you clarify your question?
Yeah, was it not clear?
No.
Okay. The the first question, before I go too far, is that um. It it's an operational matter, the running of council, but I need to know. Whether council will accept a request for consideration from councillors for the possible need. Of a policy regarding the legal contract of sale that is currently being used by council. Because it's not actually about an operational matter, it's about the contract of sale that is currently there.
Well, I'll ask the C E O for the pertinent council staff member to reply to your question.
Um, and my view that is a transactional arrangement, it doesn't equate to a policy.
Okay, thank you.
Well, I have a couple of other questions.
You keep going then.
The report. Um there two hundred and eighty six dogs were rehomed. But can council explain the conflicting reported number of dogs? Uh page two hundred and eight, uh we have two hundred and eighty six dogs were rehomed. On page two hundred and six, we have two ninety four dogs that were rehomed for the same period.
I will ask the councillor, C E O, whether we have any extra information for you.
Just looking at the the actual numbers. Uh Mister Smith, are you able to provide detail on that?
No, I can't. Through the C E O, no, I can't. I'll need to take that on notice. It very well may be a typo. Um but we'll get that clarified.
And um. The other question that I've got, there's fifty dogs claimed in this report that were adopted by homes in the Liverpool L G A. That's seventeen point five percent, whilst eighty two point five percent of dogs were rehomed. To homes outside the Liverpool L G A. Um. For the same period because nine hundred and eight dogs were impound- impounded. Um so there's an awful lot of dogs that are being rehomed in areas outside the Liverpool L G A. Is that normal? Is that the normal or is that just exceptional to this particular period of time?
I'll ask the C E O to appoint the appropriate staff member.
Mister Smith.
Thank you, through through the C E O. Um. You know, that's what the statistics are showing. So that number of animals have been rehomed to people that live outside Liverpool. Um we can check how it's been tracking over the five years since the animal shelter's been opening, but for that period of time, that's the statistics.
And if we could get that information and possibly what other L G As that are using, uh you know, benefiting from our pound. And the final question, Madam Mayor, if I'm not allowed to go into uh the need for a change to the sale.
No.
Contract sale.
Mm hmm.
Um is that if this is the normal practice and we're servicing other L G As. I wonder if we should consider a higher price purchase for people who do not live in the L G A. That are requesting to rehome a dog from the Liverpool L G A. And my basis for this is that um to the people that do live here, they're paying rates. And the the rates do contribute to some degree to the cost of the animal shelter. So we've got um the L G A residents that are being not fairly treated. Or. Unless, you know, there was a a second price for people outside the L G A to um adopt a dog.
Thank you for your statement rather than your question. Now, um.
Was a question, should we consider a higher purchase price? For people who do not live in the Liverpool L G A requesting to rehome a dog.
No.
From the Liverpool L G A.
Thank you. Just stop there. I'll ask the C E O for a staff response.
Um Madam Mayor, while I wouldn't exclude consideration of that, just my own personal. Response to that would be, the important thing is here is that we get dogs rehomed. Um and it's the outcome that that's important. Um. Any member of the Liverpool community could equally uh seek to rehome an animal. From another council area or another council facility. So by, if we were to introduce higher charges for people outside, then that may act as a disincentive. To those individuals who are keen to to take on an animal. So I think there's, it swings and roundabouts, there's two sides to that. Um but I'm happy to uh give further consideration to that.
And if I may, Madam Mayor, considering that there were only fifty dogs that were adopted by homes in the Liverpool L G A. And um. We know that we only got three people requesting. Uh that they might be able to bring the animals back because things didn't work out. Um, you know, it only takes another two people and that's a ten percent percentage. That um of of dogs that haven't worked out from our rehoming process. And then if we consider the number of dogs that are being rehomed outside the Liverpool L G A. And if that's ten percent of those number of animals, then we would have. You know, twenty seven other dogs that possibly would have been returned to the pound, working on a ten percent basis sort of thing. Um so you can see the question mark of if the statistics are correct. And it's basic, let's just round it off at a ten percent of the fifty that are rehomed in Liverpool. We would normally expect the same sort of ratio for the dogs that are being rehomed outside of Liverpool. But obviously, council isn't hearing about them. And it just made me wonder. Would there be a percentage of animals that are basically returned to council? That would warrant um a revision of the return policy.
Okay, all right. Well, I think that's a lot of questions. Did you wish to speak to your?
Uh well, can council provide an answer to the question, Madam Mayor? Is there a percentage of return animals? That council would begin to think, well, maybe we should be relooking at our return policy. That is on our sale contract.
Well, councillor, I'm going to actually put my foot down as the Chair at this point and say that I'm not going to ask anybody to respond. The meeting procedure is pretty strict when it says that you basically should come to these meetings totally prepared. And any questions, queries or motions be put up in advance so staff aren't left holding the bag, so to speak, or the dog.
Happy for them to take it on notice, Madam.
Well, that, I'm telling you as the Chair, they will. So there you go. Next, um did you want to speak to your motion?
Uh. I thought I was asking questions, Madam Mayor.
I said, do you wish to speak to your motion? Have you finished your questions? You've got a motion on the floor. You've just asked all your questions. Do you wish to speak to your motion?
Well, I'm not allowed to do anything about a returns policy, Madam Mayor, so the uh the motion is null and void.
All right.
The council rules.
Okay, so that's null and void. Moving on, the next item is in your name on page two oh, two ten.
Yes, Madam Mayor. Um well, once again, can I just ask a question? What's the difference between an operation of council in this regard and a recommendation for a strategic direction consideration? Because of the unforeseen circumstances presented by Covid. And the undetermined end of lockdown that presents the possible need for council to adopt strategies. That enables council to continue services to the constituents of Liverpool that are otherwise interrupted by Covid lockdowns.
Councillor, did you furnish this question in advance as a matter of courtesy to the C E O?
Uh no, I didn't, Madam Mayor. It's just a simple question. I can make.
It's not, it's not actually a simple question. It's quite a complex one. But out of courtesy, I will ask the C E O if he wishes to answer it or one of his staff.
We'll check that on notice, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. You have a motion, councillor? Do you have a second up?
Uh yeah, well, I would like to propose a motion, Madam Mayor, that.
You've got it in the book.
Yes, well, I'd like to change that motion, Madam Mayor, in view of the C E O's comments.
Right.
Just make it simple that council prepares a report to the September council meeting. On the online operations of Covid Safe Adoption Services that are currently operating in Campbelltown and Blacktown.
In other councillor areas.
Yep.
Okay. You've got a second up?
Seconded.
Thank you, councillor Hall. Do you wish to speak to your motion, councillor?
Yes, Madam Mayor. Um the point is that uh Covid is the. The matter which is really the question mark here. We don't know whether. How long it's going to take for us to get out of Covid for a start. And we do not know that we're not going to have future lockdowns moving forward. They say we're going to have to live with Covid. And for that reason alone, Madam Mayor, I'd just like to have a report and have a look at how those other L G As. Are operating their online operation of Covid Safe Adoption Services. Just so that we can see, well, would it work or or if it wouldn't work? How are they doing it? Um that's basically the intention of the motion, just to find out how those other L G As are operating. In a Covid safe manner for adoptions during lockdowns.
Okay, thank you, councillor. Um we got anybody who wishes to speak against the motion? Nobody. Can you put the voting sheet up, please, George? Councillor, are you voting?
Too late to foreshadow.
Uh no, you've got to, you wish, uh it's too late. She hasn't got a rebuttal. I'm going through it. She hasn't had a rider reply. Councillor hasn't had a rider reply, so you could.
Been moved and seconded, Madam Mayor.
It has been moved and seconded, but we haven't had a rider reply. Rider reply closes down debate and we were just about to vote. And somebody has actually asked, could they foreshadow a motion? And that means they probably wish to speak against the motion. So I'll indulge that speaker at this point before we vote.
Um no, I I was just quite happy with the response from the C E O, that's all.
Okay, so that, all right, then I'm putting the motion to the council. Um the councillor, are you in favour? Councillor, okay, councillor Blue, we know he's not here. Councillor Chitty?
For the love of the animals, Madam Mayor, I'll vote for.
Councillor Deed?
About four, thank you.
Councillor Haggerty?
Four. I also love the animals.
Councillor Hall?
Four.
Councillor Caliander?
Uh four, Madam Mayor.
Councillor Kani?
Four, Madam Mayor.
Councillor Rhodes?
At four.
Councillor Shelton?
Four, thank you, Madam Mayor.
Declare the me, the uh motion carried. Thank you. The next item is on page two, one, three.
Yes, Madam Mayor. I again thank the C E O's comments and um. And I draw attention to council submission on the Moorbank Intermodal Development. They outlined the need for a potential future bridge between Casula Station and the Intermodal Site. Um and so council itself has identified the need of this bridge, so I won't go too much into that. Um but I will say that it would be very advantageous for council. To have um concept plans for shovel ready uh projects. Uh in the face of the upcoming federal election, to take advantage of any funding that might. Um be provided at that particular period. And seeing though this uh pedestrian bridge. Uh has already been identified as one that council in some time in the future would like to proceed with. Um I just thought that it would be an opportune time um to do that. Now, prior to the federal elections for, uh to take advantage of any funding opportunity. So I have a motion, Madam Mayor.
What's your motion, councillor?
That council consider in the two twenty two, twenty three budget, an operational plan. The necessary funding provision to undertake the necessary studies on concept drawings, build costs. Grant opportunities, analysis of anticipated job opportunities, potential reduced vehicle trips. And other potential benefits for the provision of a pedestrian bridge from the Casula Railway Station. To Moorbank Intermodal. And for its inclusion in the ten year strategic plans and ten year capital works programme. And two, negotiate with Moorbank Intermodal a possible V P A equivalent. For state significant contribution that considers the provision of the pedestrian bridge.
Thank you. We've got a second up?
I'm going to foreshadow.
Okay, thank you. We've got a second up?
Yes.
I'll second that, Madam Mayor.
Councillor Hall beat you to it, councillor, sorry. Okay, wish, do you wish to speak to your motion, councillor Rhodes?
Uh yes, Madam Mayor. Um as I said, that we've we've got an opportunity here. And uh if we had concept plans um in the ready. Uh for shovel ready opportunities, um I think that would stand steady for Liverpool. Uh council moving forward. The pedestrian bridge is an obvious advantage. Uh uh for provisions of services to the Liverpool people. It would enable another access to that very difficult area to get to. And uh further to that, it also services the uh Cas- Casula. Or Seapac, Seapac Park and uh the benefits there then to the um. The art centre and people utilizing the equipment area. And all the facilities that have been provided opens up to those people on the other side of the river. And it would be advantageous for people to be able to get to work. Uh allowing them to come by train and simply walk across the Georges River to work. And it is recognised that Moorbank Intermodal uh is going to be of significant. And it is recognised that Moorbank Intermodal, uh, is going to be a significant job opportunity to the people in Liverpool. Um, I just think that it's a golden opportunity for, uh, for, for Liverpool in something that has already been identified by council.
Thank you, Counselor. Have anybody that wishes to speak against it?
Can I get the motion on the screen, please, Madam?
Yes, I'll ask the typist to scroll it back so you can see the entirety because it's not the one in the book.
No. It is, and I'll read it very slowly.
No, yeah, okay, read it slowly.
Consider in the two twenty-two, twenty-three budget and operational plan the necessary funding provision to undertake the necessary studies on concept drawings. To undertake the necessary, uh, funding provision. To undertake studies on concept drawings. Build costs. Grant opportunities. Analysis of anticipated job opportunities. Potential reduced vehicle trips. And other potential benefits. For the provision of a pedestrian bridge from Cassula Railway Station to Moorbank Intermodal. And its inclusion in the ten-year strategic plans. And the ten-year capital works programme. And two. So second point. Negotiate with Moorbank Intermodal. A possible VPA or equivalent for state significant contribution. That considers the provision of the pedestrian bridge. So that's the motion, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Counselor. Does anybody wish to speak against the motion?
Oh, I'll have a crack.
Okay.
Uh, Counselor Rhodes referred to golden opportunities and this might be a golden opportunity. Um, it sounds like a great idea on the surface, but we have an, you know, we have an existing process in place for assessing whether something's a golden opportunity or not. Um, uh, and that's, you know, outlined and noted in the CEO's report. Um, I, I think what we need to understand is it's going to cost a fair bit of coin to build a bridge. And I, I think a bridge across it would be fantastic, but it's going to cost a fair bit of money. It's going from one of the least used railway stations probably in the Sydney network across to a place that isn't even built yet. Um, so I, I don't know whether that's effective. I'd, I'd rather, you know, happy to, happy to get money from the Intermodal and, and do VPAs and all that, but I'd, I'd rather do an assessment on, on where the needs are. Proper needs analysis. Uh, what do the people of Liverpool want? What do the people of Liverpool need? And we make a decision, uh, through, you know, established processes. Now, if, if, if at the end of that process it comes out that this is indeed what we need, then fantastic. But, you know, to move, to move motions on the floor of council because, you know, I don't, I don't know, maybe we got a, a text message from some random person suggesting it. I don't know, but, um, I, I just think there's an orderly process here and, and this is going to be very expensive and, and there are better ways to go about it. Um, you know, there are parks needed in Edmondson Park, there are roads that need upgrading, there are community facilities that need upgrading, and I think we, we, we need to assess where the need is before we start building bridges from, you know, what is effectively a, a very unused railway station to some place that hasn't been built yet.
Okay, thank you. Do we have any speakers for the motion?
Mayor, I'll speak for it.
Yes, Counselor Chitty?
Based on the first word in point one being consider, um, I'd, I'd be happy to support it, given we're not going to be in a position, or this council's going to be in the position to consider that budget, uh, hopefully. Um, I'm sure council staff will un- undertake the necessary, uh, work before they do a presentation to coun- council, um, or that council at the time. If staff then see merits and see, hopefully this may go ahead or something that we can do, well, then that will be presented as an item for the budget. Uh, if the word considering wasn't in there, I definitely wouldn't support it. But it's a consideration, it's something to think about, um, and then, you know, we'll, we'll allow the next council and staff to do their work to say, okay, this may work, it may not work, um, you're dreaming, you're not dreaming, and we'll leave it up to them, but at least it's on the books, it's something to consider, and would be happy to support it.
Thank you. Counselor Caliander?
Thanks, Madam Mayor. Um, look, just following on from Counselor Hachety's, um, contribution there. Even considering something like this costs money, um, and time and resources of council. And frankly, I think something like this, i- given the current situation and the circumstances facing many of our residents, I don't believe it is in the community's interest to put this ahead of, um, many other result, many other, um, projects and res- and initiatives that we, that council should put its resources towards. So, like I said, even considering it costs a whole lot of, um, time and resources, both in terms of staffing and both in terms of, um, you know, consultation and, and, and the like. So I don't believe this is front and centre of what our community is, is wanting from us at this point.
Thank you. We've got any other speakers for the motion?
Madam Mayor, I'd like to speak for the motion.
Thank you, Counselor.
I think it's a wonderful idea to be considered and, um, I'm very happy that, um, in point one at the bottom, it says it's inclusion in the ten-year strategic plans and the ten-year capital works programme. Ten years in a lot is a long time. The Moorbank Intermodal will be finished by then. This will keep people well connected and I'm sure when that Intermodal is finished, that Cassula Train Station will have many more people using it. So I think it's a wonderful idea. Thank you, Counselor Rhodes, for putting this forward.
Thank you. We've got any other speakers against? You have your rider reply, Counselor.
Yes, Madam Mayor, picking up on, uh, Counselor Ayad's comments, of course. This is a project for the future. The one thing that I've noticed about council when we get these ideas, sometimes it takes a long time and a lot of work for council to get them up off the ground. So this is a plan for the future. It's not going to be interfering with our financial situation as we see ourselves in the next financial budget from twenty-one to twenty-two. It is from twenty-two to twenty-three that it's, would be considered for. So, and as much as, uh, there are lots of other possibilities that we could do, as, uh, Counselor uh, Hagerty commented on, this is an idea that, uh, would service that particular area very well. That railway station may not be used a great deal at the moment. But in another ten years, it certainly will be. And we've got to prepare for the future. And we've got to put these things in place so that we are constantly moving forward and doing, uh, improvements and providing greater facilities for the people of Liverpool. So I truly hope that, uh, the council has considered the merit in this particular motion. Thank you, Madam.
Thank you, Counselor. George, could you put the voting sheet up, please? Thank you. Counselor Ayad, how are you voting?
Four.
Thank you. Counselor Chitty?
All for transport links, May.
Counselor Deed?
Four, Madam Mayor.
Counselor Hagerty?
Against.
Counselor Hall?
All.
Counselor Caliander?
Against, Madam Mayor.
Counselor Kani?
Against, Madam Mayor.
Counselor Rhodes?
Yes, four, Madam Mayor.
Counselor Shelton?
Four, thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. That means the, one, two, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven.
It's carried.
Thank you. The next item is on page two fifteen.
In your name, Counselor Hagerty.
Um, yeah, I, I hope this one's straightforward, but I'll, I'll just make a, a few points that, um, we obviously all want to see the backside of, of this COVID, uh, outbreak, um. But, uh, I'm sure many of us have, have had emails, phone calls, messages, uh, from people that have been, um, subject to these additional restrictions, uh, construction workers. Um, you know, others that are, uh, don't, aren't sure whether they need to go to work or not, or can't go to work. Um, I'll note that anyone who works in, in an LGA of concern needs to get a permit now. Uh, that was announced on Friday. As of today, you still can't get a permit, but it comes into force on Saturday. Um, and the other point I'll make is, I, I understand that according to the Premier, these decisions are made on health advice, um. But, you know, if you look at it, I don't think health advice is the only consideration here. Why are only twelve suburbs in Penrith locked down? Um, you know, if you read between the lines, I, I think you understand why. Um, and if you apply the logic that's been applied in Penrith, then places like Voyager Point, places like, places like, places like Walesha should be open. Uh, Berwood is, uh, LGA of concern, yet they've had, uh, you know, I think a few dozen places over the last month. There are LGAs that have had a few dozen in the last few days that aren't locked down. So what I'm asking for here is a consistent set of rules applied to all of Sydney. Um, because as I see it, and, and maybe I'm missing the logic here, um, but we're applying one set of rules, uh, to the LGAs of concern and we're applying it, uh, different set of rules for the other LGAs, um. It's, it's causing, you know, deep concern and it's, it's causing, uh, people to feel like, uh, there, there are two Sydneys and that's not good for anyone. We, we should have a united, uh, city. We should have everyone feeling like they're all part of one city. Um, and that is the intention, uh, of this motion. Uh, not being, you know, not being sort of critical of the job that the Premier's got, uh, uh, you know, probably the hardest job in the world at the moment. Um, but all we're asking for here is consistent, uh, application of these restrictions.
Thank you. Counselor Chitty, you have your hand up.
Mayor, I'd be happy to second if Counselor Hagerty would consider a couple of things, but can I ask a couple of questions first?
Certainly.
In relation to the COVID numbers, they keep mentioning, obviously, we have our own, uh, local management, uh, emergency teams that, um, police, council, and I think some health authorities are on.
Mm-hmm.
Um, if I am, and sorry, this wasn't something that was sent through, but I'm hoping that it could be answered, um. A lot of infringement notices are being served. Is a lot of that coming from the areas of concern? Well, let's just worry about our own LGA, uh, from the Liverpool LGA. I'm just trying to gauge why they are locking us down. Are, are we seeing high numbers of, uh, infringement notices for people breaking the, uh, the rules of COVID?
Um, I'll ask the CEO if he has any, I've got my own view, but I'll ask the CEO about that.
Madam Mayor, um, I can confirm that the infringement notices, um, are high within Liverpool. Uh, however, having said that, the, uh, the police with whom we're working very closely also acknowledge that the vast majority of people in Liverpool and across the LGA are adhering to, uh, the various rules and, and, uh, restrictions. Unfortunately, there are, there have been, there have been instances, um, where they've been breached and, and the police have acted on them.
Thank you. Counselor Chitty, do you have any other questions?
Yes, Mayor, sorry. I was on mute there when.
It's not going to be evenly spread across Australia. It's going to be spread to areas where there are plenty of essential workers. Um, where, uh, people have no choice but to live in most quarters, um, and that's places like Liverpool. And, and the other thing I'll add is that, you know, we had the upper house inquiry, uh, a couple, couple of years ago when we passed a motion about this. Um, funding per person in the South West Area Health District is lower than the others in Sydney. So if, if we do open up at seventy to eighty percent, uh, and that not only comes true, I think you're going to find, you know, potentially a dozen people a day in this part of the world dying. And I'm not happy to support that.
Through you, Mayor, if I may?
Yes, go ahead.
Um, and, and, and it's good we're having actually this, this sort of discussion. But are we then happy to support the higher rates of suicide, uh, that are currently occurring that all of a sudden we've forgotten about? Are we happy to support the higher rates of calls to lifeline and those organisations where people are considering taking their own lives? Are we happy to support, um, people being kicked out of their homes because they can't afford to make a payment? I, I totally get every life is very valuable. I've got old parents, I've got young children, and I've had a sister that passed away at a young age. So I totally get the whole, you, you don't want to lose everyone or anyone that you care about or love. But if we keep going down the track of, let's lock down, that's great for people that haven't lost anything. We've, we've all suffered mentally, I, I believe. I've suffered physically as well. I had to dig out about six shirts to get one that actually fits today. Um, but a, a, at what point do we actually take everything else into account? Um, and, and let the world live again? Yes, we are going to get deaths. Yes, we are going to get issues in society, but what we're seeing now with vaccines and the high rate of vaccines is less and less people are actually succumbing to death. The government, yes, slow in the vaccine rollout, we all agree to that, has been able to get to the most vulnerable and we're seeing, we, we're not seeing unfortunately what happened in Victoria last year where we had a high case of mortality. We're seeing lower cases. I, I just think we, we all as a community, the world's going to have to scramble with this. Um, get vaccinated. Last night, I think it was, at Qdus Bank Arena for the sixteen to thirty-nine year olds in the areas of concern, you could get a booking, um, go online, make a booking and get it straight away. There was empty chairs in that arena. So we, we've got to at one point stop blaming, we don't have vaccine, because I think now we do. They're targeting those areas of concern. Yes, you have to travel to, to Qdus Bank Arena, and it's not just next door or across the road or anything like that. I totally get that. But at what point do we start giving consideration to the suicide rates? The people that are considering suicide, the people that can no longer afford to make, make their payments? And when do we give consideration to these young kids that are stuck at home and, and their mental health? Do we just say, we're never going to get out of this and we're just going to keep locked up forever? I think from the ground up, we need to support a point where we open up and we do have to unfortunately accept that people are going to pass away. I urge you, Counselor, to get on board with a report that was supported by every state and territory. Uh, yes, they've all of a sudden jumped up now and says because of the high cases of New South Wales and it's all New South Wales' fault. Even in New Zealand, apparently, it's because of New South Wales, they've got COVID. So it's now, let's just all blame New South Wales. But surely there comes a point in time where the vaccination rates are high, that we just open up and we just learn to live with this thing. And su- support from the opposition leader who gets airtime more than a lot of other people as well when it comes to, to politicians, i- is needed in this crucial point in time.
Thank you, Counselor. I'm not sure whether that was for or against. I think it was a put in both camps. Thank you. We've had a speaker for and sort of against to be any speakers for. Thank you. We've had a speaker for and sort of against, to be any speakers for. Councillor Caliendo?
You're on mute.
Whoops. There you go. Um, I'm not the, not the only one tonight. Um. Uh, I was also hoping to suggest, um, to the mover and the seconder, um, a slight amendment to point two of the notice of motion. Um, to include, um, so right to the Premier and other local members of parliament. Because while I take on board, um, councillor Chitty's point around, you know, having a way forward and, um, you know, looking at what happens once we, uh, you know, once we plan for opening up and easing restrictions and that sort of thing, um. We fundamentally have a responsibility towards the, the community of this area. And totally accept, um, as a frontline mental health worker, there are significant mental health impacts to restrictions to lockdown. However, there are also significant mental health impacts to members of your family dying, members of your family being incredibly ill. Um, and the, the, the sort of, um, fallout from those sorts of things as well, so regardless of which, um, you know, whi- which path taken forward, i- it, you know, we pursue, there has to be, um, thought given to what sort of resources we take on board. So whether it is investment in more mental health and wellbeing resources during lockdown in order to, to counter the impacts of, of that, or whether it is increased investment in our local health district, which has for years, um, suffered the, the impacts of being under-resourced. Um, we need to be looking at what is in the best interest of our community, because if, as the modelling suggests, it leads to, you know, a dozen or more people, um, dying in our, in our local area as a result of, you know, disproportionate impacts of, um, of Covid circulating through our community, then, um, we need to make sure that, um, whatever path forward means adequate resourcing for how our community will be impacted.
Thank you, councillor. I'm going to speak her against. We need a seconder for this motion, by the way, because-
M- madam mayor?
Thank you, councillor Caliendo. Yes, councillor Rhodes?
I was going to second it, but now-
Oh, that's all right.
For the motion.
Yeah.
I think one of the greatest, uh, or not, one of, an impact that Covid is going to have on Liverpool moving for, forward, is a negative stigma attached to Liverpool once again. Um, it is unfortunate that, um, the whole thing was handled perhaps, or could have been handled in a different way. I personally prefer, um, shelter at home rather than lockdown. Um, I think that a lot of things could have been just made a little bit diff- the actual messaging that was being made. But one of the most important factors that I think that Liverpool has got to consider is that because we have had additional restrictions and they might have been warranted, but what people remember is Liverpool, big Covid area, an unruly population that needs the army brought in to make, bring them under control. These are the, the stigmas that are going to remain with Liverpool and are going to take quite a great deal of, uh, marketing to bring a different and more positive uh, perception of Liverpool back again. So, I, I, I would have to say that I'm in agreement that uh, it would help us considerably if it was the same, um, restrictions on the whole of Sydney and not specific suburbs as has been, been done. So, on this occasion, I'd like to speak for the motion.
Okay, thank you. Um, any other speakers against? Councillor Hagerty, you've had the right of reply.
Thank you. Um, excellent discussion. Um, and I'll just clear up, it's, it's fifty-six deaths a week, not eighty, um, which works out to about eight a day. Um, based on the duality, I just looked it up. Um, certainly mindful of mental health, as, as councillor Hachidi mentioned, um, and that's what this is about. Um, and it, it also plays into councillor Rhodes's comment about the stigma. Having one set of rules, uh, you know, means that stigma's lifted off our part of the world and, and assists in, uh, in the mental health of, of, of people. Um, I also accept that we need to open up. Um, you know, we, we are going, we're in a new world. Um, you know, we, we, we're not going to get to a hundred percent vaccination, and I, I don't think we're going to get to zero Covid. We're going to get to a situation where it's manageable. Um, and I think we'll be wearing masks for a very, very long time. We won't go back to normal, but we'll go to a situation where, you know, we, we still probably socially distanced to a certain extent. We have smaller, uh, venue capacities, we wear masks, um, things like that, so. That should certainly be front and centre of council's strategic thinking going forward. What does that mean for our venues? What does that mean for, uh, everything that we do as an organisation? So I, I don't, I don't deny that we've got to open up and, um, you know, it'll be, it'll be like the flu, not in the impacts of it will be like the flu, but in the way we manage it will be like the flu. Um, so, yeah, that, that just responds to what everyone said, but basically this is about, uh, you know, as I said, uniting Sydney, um. You know, it's causing heartache, it's causing grief, and, um, we should, we should, um, you know, do the right thing here and, and, um, stick up for Liverpool and Western Sydney.
Thank you. I'm going, I know, um, he's had his right of reply, councillor Chitty. I'm going to put the voting thing up now, George. Thank you. councillor Ayad, are you voting for the motion or against?
I'm not sure yet, madam mayor. Can I just think about it? Could you come back to me?
Councillor Chitty?
Yeah, I'll vote for, may I, I've got no issue.
Thank you. councillor Doot?
I'm against, madam mayor.
Okay. councillor Hagerty?
For.
Councillor Hall? Councillor Hall?
Oh, sorry, I did that too. Mic off. Against, thank you.
Against, thank you. councillor Caliendo?
For, madam mayor.
Councillor Conib?
Against, madam mayor.
Okay. councillor Rhodes?
For.
Thank you. councillor Sheldon?
Against, thank you, madam mayor.
Councillor, councillor Ayad?
I'll go for.
Uh, okay, well, the motion is one. Two, three, four, five, six, seven. Yep.
Right, which way, wh- which, which way did you vote, madam mayor?
I will vote for the motion, so that's-
So scared now?
Yeah, so it's overwhelmingly one. Okay, moving on, thank you. The next item is on page two seventeen. Councillor Caliendo?
Sorry, madam mayor, just dropped all my paperwork. Um, yes, so as per, um, the, the background in the notice of motion, um, the, there have been concerns around the lack of consultation, particularly with local First Nations people, um, on the naming of the Western Sydney Eritreopolis area. Um, although it's kind of provisionally been, uh, named Bradfield in honour of John Bradfield, and not taking anything away from his achievements and, and, you know, him as a person. Um, I think it's, if we are, if we are to look at, um, you know, the Eritreopolis as a sort of catalyser for our future and that of our community, we need to have something that's more representative of us, representative of our unique, um, sort of history and, and current makeup as well. And, um, given that, sort of, given, given that that was partly taken into consideration with, um, naming the actual airport after Nancy Bird Walton, um, which I think was a really lovely move. Um, having an indigenous name for the, um, the Eritrepolis city would, I think, reflect to that, um, in some way. Uh, and sim- I think off the back of the CEO's comment, um, I think it would be useful to include, um, uh, yeah, to, to, to put the motion as per, um, as per the book.
Happy to second.
Madam mayor, can I ask a couple of questions?
Sorry, you certainly can, uh, answer those questions?
Ask the question, sorry. Yes, madam mayor, uh, just can you, uh, advise further as to what consultation, if any, was done with Liverpool council? I mean, what, did they even ask us?
They sent us a letter prior to Bradfield being actually, um, publicised. And we wrote to them and said we'd like the name to be reflective of the communities in South West and Western Sydney, and to also look to our indigenous folk as well. And, um, that was sent off because there are a lot of groups, including land councils and others, that were putting in the same submissions. And, uh, then we didn't hear anything. And then they announced Bradfield.
So really, apart from a letter inviting you to, uh, submit your ideas, there was no further consultation at all?
Not at all. Okay, councillor Chitty, you have your hand up for a question?
Just a similar question. Is this then redundant, given what councillor Hagerty raised earlier about an awful unleashed park or something? We've made a submission, they've said no, so should now we be wasting council officers' time again, uh, sending letters? Um-
I can answer that, councillor.
Yeah, thanks, ma'am.
Um, the actual main part of the Eritreopolis is called Bradfield, but they're now calling for further submissions on other names for other areas around the Eritreopolis.
Sorry, ma'am, my understanding was that they, they decided it was going to be called Bradfield.
Yep.
The submission's gone to the geographic names board, and that, and that is out now for exhibition.
Yeah, and we've actually taken the view that we're supporting, especially the indigenous folk, who've said quite openly they're very concerned that they've not been heard. Um, and also it's not reflective of our community in general, and that has actually been conveyed to the National Geographics Board. But, um, the government has already announced the name.
I, I think it's the same as if we go to name a street, Hachidi Street, and, and we put it out for exhibition.
Nicking that.
And-
Thank you, councillor.
Does, doesn't the figure have to be deceased before that can be considered?
Yes, he does.
We can do that. Open up and we can do that.
Um, so yeah, if we name a street, for, for one of an example, Hachidi Street, we decide that's the name, but it still goes out on exhibition and people can make a submission going, no, that's a really silly name for very obvious reasons.
Yeah.
Uh, so I think that's what's happening here. They've decided Bradfield's a name, it's up for exhibition, and we're going to put a submission in going, we don't think that's a very good name, for, again, very obvious reasons.
We've written to them diplomatically and said that it is our understanding the state government has, you know, can't think of the right words, but is supportive of Bradfield, and I agree with councillor Caliendo, it's, we're not trying to besmirch Br- Bradfield or his family or his achievements. But his actual achievements are in Sydney, and as we all know, especially through this Covid crisis, we're in a very different boat to the rest of the community, and it should be looking at the early contributions of folk that came out to Sydney, Western Sydney and South West Sydney, and also paying homage to our indigenous folk as well. So we've been consistent in that line to the, to the government and also to the Geographics and Naming Board as well. But there are going to be other suburbs they're calling for. Um, and we're maintaining that all the way along because we think it's a great opportunity to, well, it's a new area, new city, and I think it's a great way to go into the future.
Um, through, through, through the CEO, madam mayor, I'm confused now. Uh, is our main objective to rename the Eritreopolis to a more appropriate name for Liverpool? Because I see them as two separate matters, in that being an objective and another objective of supplying names for different suburbs in Bradfield.
I'll ask, I'll ask the CEO to answer the question.
Thanks, madam mayor. Um, my understanding is that the, uh, decision to name the first suburb Bradfield at core suburb, um, was made after a consultation exercise that was conducted through the Western Park and City Authority, uh, and in conjunction with the Premier. Uh, this process is, uh, a, a broader process of consultation, and it allows for uh, submissions both on the Bradfield name and on possible others, uh, for some of the other suburbs.
So just to clarify, then, if I may, um, Dr Eddie Jackson, um, do, is that saying that it's only a core suburb that's been called Bradfield? I had the envisage that the whole Eritreopolis was called, um, Be- Bradfield.
No, not the whole area, councillor.
No.
Sorry, CEO.
No, madam mayor, you're, you're correct.
So how many names are they calling for?
How long's a piece of string? I don't, at this point, we don't know, councillor.
So I've got the gazette in front of me.
Right.
Uh, pursuant to blah, 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 Geographic Names Act. The Geographic Names Board hereby notifies that it proposes to create a new address locality, uh, named Bradfield. And amend the existing address loca- locality boundaries of Brindely and Badger is correct, so it's pu- so it's proposing to create a place called Bradfield. This is just about Bradfield. Um, alternat- uh, yeah, and it's calling for submissions on that proposed name. And the gist of the motion, if I understand correctly, councillor Caliendo, is to say, make a submission, we don't like this name, we would prefer an indigenous, indigenous name.
Thank you, councillor Hagerty. Okay, all right. Is there any opposition? I'll put it, those in favour, those against, a curate carried. Next item's on page two, two O in the name of councillor Hachidi.
Thank you, mayor. I've got a, um, motion that George has.
Right.
That I've to move, not the one in the book.
Yep.
Which has made a few small changes. Which I think tightens it right up, um. And before I formally move it, does anybody, obviously you want to read it, and then does anyone have any suggestions, changes?
Do you want to read it out, councillor?
Oh, do I have to?
Well, do you want me to read it out? Because it's pretty hard to read.
Ma'am, the, 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 the main changes are that the word solely is put in there for unoccupier purposes. Um, the change in bullet point two to all owners from pretty much one owner. Uh, in relation to point two, that's gone from ten percent down just to fifty dollars, just to make it a nice round figure. Um, that we get a report back obviously by the end of September. Put this out for thirty days on the proviso that it goes out on the first of October. This was sent through to the CEO, to George, to Jennifer and to Vish. It was very late, I do apologise, uh. Uh, close the applications, we'll open them up for a month, and then just report back to us in a briefing session on how things are going.
Happy to second it, madam mayor.
Thank you, councillor Doot. So moved by councillor Chitty and seconded by councillor Doot. Um, did the CEO wish to make any comments at all on this motion?
Thanks, madam mayor. I, I haven't had a chance to look at this, uh, prior to uh, its appearance on, on the screens now. Um, I suppose the general point I would remind councillors of is the need for us to consider the financial cost of this, uh, and I'm wondering if Mr Nandan has had a chance to put some numbers to the, the range of costs that would apply, should this be, uh, adopted?
For the CEO, unfortunately, no, um, I don't have any, any numbers, uh, at the minute. But, uh, I think the only change there relates to the pensioners, so it's, um, but the, the ordinary rates remains as per the CEO's comment in the addendum booklet.
Councillor Chitty, I couldn't help but see your face. Did you wish to clarify? Yes.
Oh, sorry, just a, a, a clarity. Now, there's more than just one change, which is to pensioners. Uh, there is a change- There is a change where now requires all owners to have claimed and received the disaster. And I do apologise, I did send it through late to the relevant officers, I was busy today. So solely for unoccupied purposes, so that then knocks out anyone that may have a granny flat on their property as well, which is leased out, and then they live in one property, so now it's solely. And I thank the particular staff member for that suggestion earlier that I didn't take, which I am now taking. All owners, so not just one owner, must have received the grant and obviously the pensioner one, and it's only open for 30 days.
Okay.
And then councillor Haal, Madam Mayor, I believe, sorry, not councillor Haal, councillor Haggerty, was making a suggestion at the wrong item previously. Does he still want to make that suggestion?
Well, I'll ask the question. If this passes, it's got to be funded from somewhere. I understand that RIDE funded it, it's out of their waste levy. Now, would that be hindrance, a help or neither, if we were to, say, fund it out of the waste levy?
Is that possible?
Madam Mayor, I'll ask the general councillor, but my understanding is that that wouldn't be possible, it wouldn't be considered legal. Is the general councillor able to comment?
Thank you. Through the CEO, you are correct in relation to that. The funding source cannot be out of any levies collected for specific purposes, it can only come from general funds.
So, but, okay. The funding of the grant can't come out of the levy. But would we reduce the cost of the levy and direct the savings made in the reduction of that levy to the cost of this?
If I may, just to ask that you repeat that proposition.
So I think the way it's written, it's written as a grant, and so I guess the way it's written is, we'll dip our hand into the levy to pay for it. What I'm suggesting is that we reduce the levy, the waste management levy, for those who apply and are successful, equal to the amount that their discount would be.
So, just to explain it, so if somebody gets their waste levy and they're successful, their waste levy would be reduced by $50?
In that second, yeah, in point two, the pensioner. So the way it's written now is it's as a one-off grant, but what we're doing is effectively squaring the ledger by whatever the cost of this is. We're going to reduce their waste levy by that same amount. I've blown everyone's brain, haven't I?
I can answer through the CEO if that's appropriate.
Yes, please.
Again, you are going back into giving back a rate discount, which is unlawful, in my view, that is my opinion on that. And if there is to be a grant awarded, it cannot come out of the waste levy. So therefore, if you're going to apply a discount to the rate levy, then, then one, we're back to giving a discount on rates. And then secondly, in my view, the grant would then be funded out of a levy you cannot touch for a grant purpose.
But is the levy, the levy's charged at the same time as rates, but is the levy part of the rates?
It is, it is separate. So obviously there are levy, there are levy parts of the rates. The rest of the rates are ordinary, general residential rates.
Yeah. So what I'm suggesting is we don't touch the residential rate. So when you get your bill, it's itemised. We're not touching the residential rates bit, which, touching that line item, which says the waste management levy, which is just for convenience sake, charged at the same time and get your rates notice.
That would already be set and agreed in terms of what that amount is, in my view. And again, then at that point, I'm of the view that you are using levied funds to grant, to grant money.
To create a grant.
Correct.
I'm just stopping you there so you can all have a think. Councillor Shelton?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. Through you to the appropriate officer. Is this in addition to council's existing hardship policy, which meets from time to time in relation to requests for relief from paying council rates?
I'd have to ask councillor Chitty. I thought the hardship situation had been reintroduced, which would be separate to this, I would imagine. But, Chitty?
So there's two bites of the apple, it looks like.
Yeah. No, sorry, sorry, to everyone, to the ears on that, I was told that I couldn't touch rates. I'm not touching rates. So it's not two bites of the cherry. So it's either the motion, and I thank Jennifer for all her time over the last few weeks to try to get this right. And I believe that I now have got it right with her help and the wording. But how's it two bites of a cherry when, when I tried to have a bite of the cherry at the last council meeting in relation to rates, it was deemed unlawful? I now put a grant up and people are saying you're going back to rates, sorry.
I think what, councillor.
Excuse me, councillor Haggerty, thank you. I think what councillor Shelton's suggesting is we have the hardship committee and the hardship policy which we created last time, which has been reintroduced, so people can apply under hardship. That system is working parallel to somebody who's actually wanting to have relief. So there's nothing anywhere at the moment to say, and maybe you need to put that in your motion, that if they've applied under the hardship guidelines or policy, they can't apply under this. So that's where I think councillor Shelton's trying to raise.
Another way of looking at it, they're going to be filling in two applications.
Yeah, that's right.
Over the next few weeks, for essentially the same issue.
Yeah, that's.
Which at the best of times doesn't seem efficient.
No, I understand what you were trying to say. Just to everybody hold their breath for a second, councillor.
Yes, Madam Mayor, I have an issue with it as well. I'm not sure what councillor Chitty is trying to achieve, other than getting some money back. But if we're restricting this to landowners only, what happens to the renters? People who rent, they don't benefit from this at all. So in a sense, this is discriminatory.
Not well targeted.
Well, I think that's a speaker against.
Totally reject that, Madam Mayor.
No, hold on, meeting procedure, please. No, councillor Haal has a right to his discussion and he's given his view. Yes, now councillor Sheldon, is your hand still on?
No, you don't have my questions.
You're done with your questions, okay. Let's go back. And councillor Chitty, have you any other questions?
No, Mayor, just on your point, and if I need to appoint a order, I will. I'm not going to be accused of being discriminatory to anybody in any forum, anywhere. While I appreciate everyone has a right to say what they want to say and the freedom of speech. But if someone wants to accuse me of discriminating against anything, sorry, I won't cop it.
Well, I appreciate your compassion, but I think what councillor Haal was trying to say is, when you rent a property, the costs of renting a property, including rates, is included in your rental component. Now, if the owner of the actual building is getting a reduction because of the Covid situation, then the rent should reflect that. Is that picking up on your sentiment, councillor Haal?
Absolutely. Thank you, Madam Mayor. I wasn't having a go at councillor Chitty at all, on the contrary. I'm just saying what you said.
Yeah, no, I appreciate that. I understand where you're coming from. Okay, councillor Chitty, do you wish to speak to your motion?
Mayor, before I do, does any councillor have an issue, want any words changed, would they like to see anything changed?
I liked councillor Shelton's suggestion that if you've applied for the normal hardship provisions, you're excluded from this. So you decide which way you want to work it out. So you either go for this and you get the discount, or you decide, actually, it's going to come good in about five or six months. And when I do come good, I'm happy to pay my rates.
Yeah.
Mayor, just on that point, I'm happy to take that on board if general counsel can give some advice. I'm trying to stay away from rates, except to benchmark it against the rate to be able to come up with a grant figure.
Yep.
I don't want to get anywhere near the rates unless I really have to, because I don't want to see unlawful after.
No, I understand.
So if I can get that advice, I'm happy to then go from there.
Yeah. Well, I'll ask the CEO to ask Jen.
General councillor.
Thank you. If I could just ask the councillor Hachidi just to repeat that for me, please.
Thanks through you, Mayor, or CEO. I don't want to be faced with the same situation where I brought up rates and grant from rates or rebates. To have this then tied into rates again, and we can't discount rates or have anything to do with rates. If that is introduced into the motion, is there an issue?
Yeah.
So if we add, in point one, if we add an additional dot point that says excludes rate payers that have applied under the.
Hardship provision.
Hardship provision.
Due to Covid.
In, through the CEO, if I may, now answer that question. It would need to not use the word rate payers, because then a grant cannot be applied to a rate payer, has to be paid to a person. So I would say it excludes owners or persons.
Thank you, general counsel, and I hope everyone now sees my point.
Councillor, councillor Haggerty, you have your hand up?
I'm putting it down.
Okay, thank you. All right. Okey dokey. Now councillor Chitty has asked for feedback on this motion from his fellow councillors. Has anybody got any feedback they wish to provide? Anybody wish to speak for or against this particular motion?
Mayor, I'll briefly speak for, if it's okay.
Yeah, go ahead.
Thanks. And from the outset, thanks, Jennifer, and sorry for being painful for the last three weeks in order to ensure that we sort of get the wording correct on this. And to councillors, to council staff and to everything, I think I'll quickly repeat what I said in the briefing session. When we had a Covid pandemic last year, we all stood together and said, let's protect, obviously our staff, because they're very important, and try to minimise any disruptions. We put out grants to business owners. We've done a lot of good things when it comes to our reaction to Covid. People during this second wave are really finding it tough. They're finding it hard. We're all locked into our homes, we're meeting people that we've probably never met, and there are only two or three doors down the road from us. And we're starting to talk to them socially distanced, away from each other with a mask on and everything else. And really hearing the stories of people out there. Initially, yes, you could have cast a big net on who we may have attracted with the motion. But I've really, after the briefing session, tried to restrict it to those that are really in need of this. Made it as tight as possible. I don't think I can make it any tighter than that. I think we do need to give a hand to our rate payers who have really supported us during this pandemic. They've paid their rates. Yes, some people have gone on hardship and delayed things. But let's face it, most of our income, a lot of our income, comes from our rate payers. They're still paying their rates, they're keeping the organisation going. If there is a bit of a hand that we can give back to our rate payers or to our residents or a person, I can't mention the word rate payer, to persons or people in our community, I think we should. I don't think it's going to blow out like everyone or some of the, thank you for the presentations, I don't think it's going to blow out that much. If we're all in this together, let's give some people out there a hand as well. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Anybody wish to speak against the motion? Nobody? Okay, can you put?
Sorry, Madam Mayor, sorry, Madam Mayor.
My microphone was off again. I'd like to speak against it.
Go ahead.
On the basis that, first of all, as I tried to say earlier, that only some people will benefit from it, not everyone. The only ones who will really benefit from this are the property owners, I think. And there is a much bigger problem here with our rates, and that is the people in the rural areas. The people in the rural areas, their properties have risen astronomically over the past few years, particularly those near the Eritropolis. We're not doing very much for them at all. And those people have problems trying to pay their rates. Which means, in the long run, they are going to be forced to sell their properties simply because they won't be able to afford the rates that are being charged based on the value in general of the property. So this is really helping some people. I do not know what the overall cost will be, but it will run into the millions of dollars. If we're looking at a, previously, we looked at a 6% rate variation and that netted us about $6 million. So if this 10% were to go to everybody, that would be an enormous amount of money that I don't think we can afford. It would add to the deficit enormously. So you're not going to repay it. Thank you.
Thank you. Have you got any other speakers for the motion?
I have a question, Madam Mayor.
Yes, councillor Rhodes.
Approximately, well, no, not approximately, do we know the number of house owners, homeowners in Liverpool?
So you're asking for the amount of ratable properties?
Yeah, or home, yes, ratable properties.
I'll ask the CEO if that's available. It may not be at this point of time.
Thanks, Madam Mayor. I think it's in the region of 75,000, but I'll ask Mr Hompurus to confirm that.
Through the CEO, I believe it's approximately 72,000, based on that modelling that we undertook a few weeks back.
So 72,000 residential ratable properties, yeah?
Correct.
If I may speak through the CEO in terms of the presentation that I did last week.
Yep.
There are currently 76,500 residential properties. And 9,000 eligible pensioners in terms of pension properties as opposed to residential.
Are those 9,000 included in the 76,000?
No.
Okay, that's additional. Okay, thank you. Councillor Rhodes?
No, I just need a moment to digest, Madam.
Okay. Well, we're moving on because I'm conscious that people are probably getting a bit weary at this stage, now I am. Okay, we've had a speaker for, we've had a speaker against, a speaker for. Any other speakers for?
Just to be quick, in line with councillor Rhodes's questioning, there are criteria here. It's not going to go to all 76,000 or whatever the number was. It goes to someone, it only goes to owner occupiers. So it knocks out all investment property people. It only goes to people where all owners are on a Covid disaster payment, so they've lost their job and they've met that criteria, so that cuts it down again. The property's in the name of an individual, cuts it down again. And if they've already applied for hardship, it cuts it down again. So I guess we've funneled it down to people who, it's a set of criteria, it's not going to be perfect, but it is a set of criteria of people that are in need.
But it's not.
Have been adversely affected.
It's not a percentage any longer, is it, councillor? The writing would be kind of small for me to say.
For the pension as it is, but for the other one it isn't, but it's capped.
It's capped, okay. What's it capped at? Can you say the?
300.
$300? Okay, thank you. I think I need the font a bit bigger, mine. Okay, there, thank you. All right, I'm going to ask the mover in reply.
Yeah, I just have a question, and this stems off councillor Haal's things. I missed, I think it was the June or, I think it was the June meeting. There was a recommendation put for councillors to take a pay rise. Was that adopted?
Yes, councillor.
All right, thanks. Mayor, that's fine, thanks. I just wanted to ask the question. Councillors, there is no, nothing we put out there will be perfect. And sorry, I don't buy the numbers, no matter what anyone says, that everybody is going to apply for this. I've tried to reduce it to the bare minimum to ensure we capture those people that are actually in hardship and really do need a hand. In relation, councillor Haal raises the rural residents. I suggest councillor Haal, just check our website and you'll find how much support the rural residents can actually get if people want to actually have a look at what council can actually offer them in relation to rate relief. But I'll leave that up to yourself to actually find on our website, which is available to the public and available to everyone. Councillors, I put it up in good faith, I've cut it back as much as I can. Seek your support. If I get it, I get it. If not, we move on to the next item. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Put the voting up, please, George. Thank you. Put the, uh, voting up, please, George. Councillor Yard.
For, Madam.
Thank you. Councillor Chitty?
For me.
Councillor Deed?
For Madam Mayor.
Councillor Hagerty?
For.
Councillor Harle?
Councillor Harle. Madam Mayor, despite my arguments, I like, I'm for.
Thank you. Councillor Caliendo?
For, Madam Mayor.
Councillor Kaniib?
For, Madam Mayor.
Councillor Rhodes?
Yeah, I'm going to support the mums and dads for.
Councillor Sheldon?
Against, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. I declare the motion carried. Okay.
Can I call a division on that motion?
If you wish.
Thank you.
But the.
I'm also standing up.
Well, I'm not, um, but the, who voted whatever way is there, and it's publicly being streamed as we speak. So it is already a division as such.
Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, we're going to have a five, no, we're not. That's not true, she says. Nellie there. Okay, um, the next item is on page five, six, one. In the addendum book.
Well, I'm a great part of car parking in the CBD, Madam Mayor. I'm very disappointed that it's being pulled out of the, uh, civic centre. Um.
Sorry, Mayor, can I, um, sorry councillor Rhodes?
Don't worry, councillor Chitty, it's in your name.
Yeah, sorry, I've just trying to scroll screens and my computer really isn't working that well at the moment. Um, happy to move as the book, Madam Mayor.
Thank you.
Then I've got, then I've got some questions if I can.
Fine. Have we got a seconder?
I'll second.
Seconding.
Councillor Rhodes, seconding. Okay, thank you. Councillor Chitty, what are your questions? You're on mute, councillor Chitty.
Sorry, Mayor. Was, was councillor Hagerty just about to second that?
No, I was going to foreshadow.
Oh, okay, all right. So I've got some, I've got some questions there.
Yep, go ahead.
If you don't mind me. Question to, through the CEO, to the director of planning. The initial DA that was submitted last year, obviously had some traffic studies, traffic reports. And everything else that supported the car parking spaces, am I correct? Mister Smith?
Thank you. Through the CEO, there would have been a traffic impact assessment that accompanied, uh, the original development application, yes.
Okay, so it's not on, so we got the tick from traffic that it all works, the car park. That was approved last year then, all works and there's no issues. Circulation, movement, anything else? I'll take that as a yes if they.
Sorry, I was just waiting. Through the C, through the CEO, the, the consent was approved, yes.
Thank you. Mayor, can I just, a few more questions?
Yes, certainly.
Yet through the CEO to the, uh, to Raj, our other director. Raj, if only four levels out of five are built, and then ten, and this building goes up, this fantastic, good-looking building. Um, what are the chances of then digging a fifth level if we need car parking?
Um, through the CEO, so I apologize councillor, I'll have to have a think about that, uh, that, that question. I'll have to take that on notice.
From, from an engineering perspective, and I, thank you, you take it on notice, from an engineering perspective, do you think it would be feasible to actually then try to dig out another car park?
Uh, could, could you repeat the question, please, councillor?
If the building is built with four levels and the modification DA was withdrawn. And this building is up and it's all leased out and it looks great, and then we all of a sudden need more parking. Would it be easy enough then to dig out another basement?
That, that would be, uh, almost impossible. That'd be very difficult.
Thank you, Mister Raj. Through you, Madam Mayor, to the CFO if I can.
Yes, certainly.
Do car parks, obviously car parks are all over the place in the city, in Parramatta and whatnot, at least out to. To car park operators. They obviously lease them out because they make money. Would I be correct in saying that, Mister CFO?
Through, through the C, um, through the CEO, uh, of course, it's, it's a commercial decision. If the commercial operators are doing business, of course, they're making profit.
Thank you, Mister CFO. Is Tina, our manager of community services there? If I can ask her a question, Madam Mayor, if that's okay through the CEO?
Yes, certainly, if the CEO approves it.
Thank you. Through you, Mister CEO, uh, we're considering a childcare centre in, um, in Civic Place. Hopefully a nice big one that's successful and, and works quite well. Um. If we have more parking spaces for a childcare centre, doesn't that make it more attractive for parents?
Uh, uh, thank you, um, through the CEO, um, councillor. Um, the, the provision for childcare parking has been considered, but we're, we're, we are expecting a lot of, um. To be honest, in the structural plan, we've actually detailed, we're actually experienced a lot of walkings and prams, so we've got some. Pram provisions i- in our design as well. So, um, but yes, um, I mean, there is a provision within, within the guidelines. On, on a number of car, car spaces which have been considered already within, um, within the design.
Thank you. And just one more question if I can, Mayor, back to Mister Raj, the director of infrastructure. Um, council and being on it for thirteen years now, we've spoken about the Northumberland Street Car Park for a very long time. And, and we've really been patching that up. Hasn't one issue always been, where do people park if whoever to knock that down?
Uh, that has certainly been one of the issues, says through the CEO, yes, councillor.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll move the motion.
Thank you. I'll take you speaking for, through your interesting questions. Anybody wish to speak against the motion?
Uh, I'll speak against it. Um, I, uh, I saw the, the DA listed in the, in the email when it came through. And, uh, the first thing I did was get on the phone to the CEO and we had a, a frank and honest discussion. Uh, and, uh, I, uh, compliment the CEO for our ability to have frank and honest discussions about issues I'm not happy with. Um, I wasn't happy with it. Uh, however. Uh, while I'm a big supporter of more parking in the CBD, especially around that part of the CBD, I'm a bigger supporter of prudent financial management. Uh, and, uh, looking after the budget. Um, and unfortunately, uh, the numbers just don't stack up here. Um, I would have loved three, four, five hundred parking spots, but, um, if, I think it's two seventy one. You know, we almost get to three hundred there. Um, but you get to the point where, uh, you know, uh, the additional cost for additional. I don't know whether it's, uh, you know, seventy odd car parking spaces for the amount of money we're talking about. Uh, that money would be much better spent, um, elsewhere. Uh, and I'd much better advocate for, uh, other places around that part of the CBD. Uh, for car parking and also working constructively with the developer to maximise parking next door at their development. So, uh, on those grounds, I was disappointed to find out about the changes the way we did. Um, uh, I, I think, uh, prudent financial management has to take priority here.
Thank you. We've got the other speakers for the motion.
I do have some questions that has been raised just by councillor Hagerty's comments. It disturbs me that we're questioning a financial issue with the civic centre. We've been over the financial figures so many times, and we've been assured by council. Different scenarios and it's all rosy, we're all okay, there isn't a problem with the financial, um. Matters regarding, uh, the cost of, of the civic centre. So to raise it as a financial con- concern for saving money. Um, that, that sort of bothers me that it's now going back to a financial issue. When, um, according to the, um, comments, it was, um. More in regards to, I don't know, that, that it was a inconvenience. Traffic wise, but we know that the traffic has already been approved for it. So I'm very, very confused and I'm very, very concerned. I'm not going to, um, let down the constituents of Liverpool who have been very, very clear. About the need for more parking in Liverpool. And to tell you the honest truth, I mean, the, the parking was one of the issues that was, uh, that I was most concerned about. Uh, by providing enough parking at the, uh, the southern end, the bookend of the southern end of the Liverpool CBD. Has always been an issue. And, um, you know, I'm just not going to let down the Liverpool. Uh, constituents who would be very, very angry to know that, okay, we're taking away the parking.
Thank you. Uh, any other speakers, um, against? Okay, you have your right of reply, councillor Chitty.
Thanks. Can I start with some questions again, Mayor? Councillor Hagerty states prudent financial decision and whatnot, so does that mean when we okayed it? We made the wrong decision, councillor? And I haven't seen anything, um. Obviously, yes, it popped up in our DA report on a Sunday night. But I haven't seen anything else that says that we can't afford it. I thought we could when we've been signing off on anything. So is there something that you have that we don't, councillor?
Yeah, in, in response to that and in response to councillor Rhodes's comments, this isn't about, um, saving money, it's about spending more money.
No, sorry, ki- through you, Mayor, if I can to.
Yes.
The DA was submitted twelve months ago on the proviso that we could do it. Otherwise, we wouldn't have submitted a DA. Now, we can go backwards and forwards, but we won't, but I haven't seen anything else. In relation to the, sorry, to the childcare centre and sorry, Tina, but I think once we asked for a business case for that, was that ever sent through? And apologies if I missed it.
I'll ask the CEO.
Councillor.
It was, apologies then.
Yeah, I think I'm from that.
Thank you very much. In closing, Mayor, um. We mainly take our advice from our council officers and from what I heard from the directors going around the room there quickly. Um, this makes sense. Um, once we build the building, we're never going to be able to get that space. If we're ever going to think about doing anything for Northumberland Street, um, which we have pretty much not done anything with and patched up for many, many, many years. One of the main reasons is we don't have spots anywhere else. We bought another location in Liverpool where we hoped to get a car park. It's now sitting as probably the most expensive car park the CBD has. It has, has seen and we've done nothing there. There are even some councillors that keep calling other levels of government. Give us more transit, community parking. You go other levels of government, you should be providing this, you should be providing that. Well, councillors, you know, we can't just keep asking others. We've got an opportunity here. Twelve months ago, a DA was submitted, it was approved by a planning panel that said it all works. We need parking. Councillors have been advocating for parking. We've got the parking and now we're trying to take it away. Bad move if you ask me. Obviously, we're a council, we're a democracy. And I'm seeking support of the councillors to ensure that this DA is withdrawn and we deliver what we promised our community. More parking in the CBD. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Um, I'm just going, I saw the hand up of the CEO. Did you wish to comment before we go to the vote, councillor?
Yes, Madam Mayor, thank you for the opportunity. Councillors, um, I think there's a degree of confusion. Here, which we thought we had clarified in terms of the, the briefing last week. But if I can remind you, the resolution of the twelfth of December twenty eighteen. Directed the CEO to proceed with the Liver- Liverpool Civic Place Development as per the plans and scope reported to council. On the twentieth of October twenty eighteen without additional car parking. And to direct the CEO to explore the possibility of additional public parking sites. Such as Woodlam Leisure Centre, Perry Street and Bathurst, Bathurst Street. And report back to council by the ordinary meeting of council in March. Um. We have acted on those resolutions, councillors. We have provided over two hundred additional car parking spaces at Woodlam. With, there's over a hundred, I believe, at Perry Street. Um, and we continue to explore other opportunities. Um, the original number was two eighty five. Through the Design Excellence Panel, um, and others, that was further reduced. And we were then given the importance that council has placed on car parking. The Director of Property sought to introduce through a review on the, the design excellence process. Through the design development, to introduce a fifth. Uh, level of parking that would have provided an additional eighty spaces. It was always the DA that was lodged on the, uh, October twenty twenty. Sought to explore the possibility of providing those additional spaces. Subject to obviously a consideration of a number of factors, including cost. That cost came out at seven million. And in response to councillor Rhodes's issues, I can assure you, there are no issues about finance. But the reality here is that an additional level of parking would cost an additional seven million dollars. To that, to the budget that was agreed, uh, and the scope that was agreed. In October and December twenty eighteen. So there was always a caveat with that submission. It was, it, it was placed there. To enable, um, the excavation and any future construction to take place in a timely way. And Mister Morgan will be able to give you that chronology if you wish, but I just want to clarify at this point. That this isn't taking something away, because we never had it. We explored the possibility.
Okay.
Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Um, councillors, we've had the right of reply and I'm sorry if you have questions, you'll have to take them offline after the council meeting. I'm going to put the vote, yes councillor.
Sorry, Mayor, and I do respect, when you close it, you close it. But the CEO then did have an opportunity to speak after the debate was closed.
I gave him that leeway because he had his hand up before you had your right of reply.
Okay.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, my question is in regards to the CEO's comments.
No, I'm sorry, I'm sorry councillor. As I said, if you need to question it, take it offline and ask the CEO after the meeting.
But then how can I make him then form decision on my vote if I have a question?
To be honest with you councillor, there's been many briefings and lots of information.
Madam, Madam Mayor, you're on mute.
Yes, I know, my finger just wandered. Um, there is lots of information on our webpage and up-to-date information about the progress of this particular project. There's a lot of information available and there's been le- lots of presentations on this matter. So if you wish to have all the paperwork sent to you again, we can arrange for that, but we are not.
Madam Mayor, I don't wish for that. I don't wish for that. Thank you. I, I appreciate that. It's just in regards to the seven million dollars.
It's in the report that it would cost seven million for the extra amount of car parks.
Okay, so, the seven million plus the hundred ninety five million?
Yes.
A hundred ninety five million and then plus seven million for this new basement, is that correct?
Yes.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, I appreciate that.
You're welcome. Now, can you put the voting up, please, George? Thank you. Councillor Yard, how are you voting?
I am voting for.
Thank you. Councillor Chitty?
For me.
Councillor Deed?
For, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Councillor Hagerty?
Against.
Councillor Harle?
Against.
Councillor Caliendo?
Against, Madam Mayor.
Councillor Kaniib?
Against, Madam Mayor.
Councillor Rhodes?
For, Madam Mayor.
Councillor Shelton?
Against, thanks, Madam Mayor.
I'm voting against and.
I'll call a division, Mayor, please.
Well, they're there, councillor, everybody can see it.
So, so Mayor, will that be recorded in the minutes as who voted for?
We can have that recorded in the minutes, no problem.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. That motion has been lost. Thank you. The next item is protecting Liverpool's koalas. And that would be in the name of councillor Rhodes.
Yes, and I can make this one a bit quicker to make up a bit of time, Madam Mayor. I think the council and really appreciate their work. I appreciate the report and I am very much aware of all the hard work that we've done in this area. My issue still remains, but it, uh, appears I'll have to get some other advice and take this on with council at another time. Thank you.
I appreciate that. Thank you, councillors. We will now have a five-minute break and we'll go into confidential when we come back. Conscious that councillor Hagerty said that he had a foreshadowed motion, was it for norm, normo seven?
Yep, and look, I'm, I'm happy to speed things up.
Please do. Do, do oh seven and then I will do the.
There you go, in the chat. I've posted the wording in the chat.
Okay, would someone like to second that motion?
Sorry, can we see it? Oh, there it is there, sorry.
Very, very short and to the point, really. Well, almost. Did you wish to read it out councillor?
Uh, notes, it's strong support for more public parking in Liverpool CBD. Work with the developer of Civic Place to maximise public parking as part of the developer works. Uh, and this is actually one, it's some, some resources turned into two. Seeks further opportunities for more public parking in the southern part of the CBD at both private and council-owned land.
Okay, we got a seconder?
Can, can we, yeah, can we just make points three and four, one point, please?
Madam Mayor.
Yes, councillor.
Where are we? We're not on the agenda, are we?
We're back, we're back on normo seven.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, um, there was a foreshadowed motion announced and I'm sorry, I didn't hear it. And we'd moved into the confidential and councillor Hagerty said quite openly, he said, I foreshadowed and I went, yes you did, I'm so sorry.
Okay, okay, thank you.
It's just really a, a motion to say that we're really all trying to get the best outcome for public parking in the CBD, really.
Ma- ma'am, a quick question, are we back in open?
Yes, we are.
Excellent. Can I ask some questions or speak against this motion?
You can speak against it. I'd like to remind councillors, you have fifteen minutes left before this meeting closes.
I promise I'll use fourteen of them, ma'am.
Please go, because I haven't read out the motions yet.
I just, just, I, I, I'm gonna speak against this motion, not because I'm against parking, but sorry councillor Hagerty. Work with the developer of Civic Place to maximise public parking as part of developer works. We just put a section seventy, uh, modification DA in to reduce. So what we're saying is, if I understand your motion correctly, is let's not put it on the council side, put it on the other side. I mean, we've got a DA that's approved. If we're fair income, sorry, my point, I'm not saying that you aren't. If we're fair income about delivering car parking, we've got a DA that's already approved. We're then gonna say, let's toss that away, get rid of those parking spots and let's work with someone else. Public parking in the southern part of the CBD, we've seen about six motions, three motions, four motions, not sure how many motions we've seen and we still haven't got anywhere. Sorry councillor, if you're fair income about parking in the CBD or the top end, you wouldn't have supported, um, you would have supported my motion which kept the parking spots in Civic Place and not just put up a motion here just so that we could all feel good about, you know, the community and saying, yeah, we're gonna eventually deliver car parking spots. Sorry councillor, can't buy this one.
Okay, thank you councillor. We need a second of the councillor Hagerty's motion.
I'll second it, Madam Mayor.
Thank you councillor Caliander. Councillor Hagerty, I think we'll just go straight to the right of reply.
Yeah, look, um, if I wanna buy a hamburger, I don't go to the most expensive hamburger joint, I do a bit of assessment and I make sure I get the best hamburger, best bang for buck for my burger. And this is about getting the best bang for buck for my burger. Except the burger, it's called car parking. It's very late at night, let's have a vote.
Okay, could you put the voting sheet up please, George?
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
I'd be happy to support this if point two was taken out because it contradicts the other motion that was put up.
No, it doesn't. But I'm saying at the developer works, at the developer works next door.
Uh, there's another project councillor, I think that's what he's talking about. Okay, all right, we've got the voting sheet up, please. I know that councillor Yard is the first to come off the rank, so I'll ask, have councillor Yard, how are you voting?
No, I'm against.
Okay, councillor Chitty.
Against.
Councillor Deed.
Against.
Councillor Hagerty.
Or.
Councillor Hall.
Or.
Councillor Caliander.
For.
Thank you. Councillor Khanib.
Or.
Councillor Rhodes.
It's a difficult one. I want parking, but I find this very hypocritical, so I'm against.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Shelton.
For, thank you.
It's carried and now I will read the, um, motions that were in confidential. We had the council item info two on page one, five, three, and the resolution was council receiving notes report. We had plan O two for five, page five, three, one. And the, the motion is a fairly lengthy one that council one notes the gateway determination, subsequent alterations to the Liverpool L E P Plan two thousand and eight amendment sixty-three and the results of public exhibition and community consultation. Two, council notes that the council has been authorised as a local plan-making authority for its planning proposal and that the final decision will be made by the Minister of Planning and Public Spaces or delegate. Three, endorses the assessment of the revised planning proposal undertaken by Hill P D A and its recommendations. Four, notes the draft planning agreement negotiations undertaken to date. Owner. Five, endorses the planning proposal subject to the recommended changes contained within the Hill P D A assessment and forwards it to the Department of Planning, Industry and Environment with recommendations that the planning proposal proceeds with the request that finalisation only occurs once the, the following has been completed. A, the execution of the planning agreement that establishes a secure mechanism to deliver and propose supporting public open space and road upgrades as follows. One, construction of open space park and embellished works to the area designated as Park Three with a minimum area of two thousand five hundred square metres. Park will remain in private ownership to, of the developer but with public access easement. Two, dedication of Park Two to council. Park Two is the land not currently owned by council that is proposed to be rezoned to R E one, public recreation. Three, construction of the signalised intersection at the Main Street and Flynn Avenue and the intersection for the new proposed access lane and Flynn Avenue. Four, construction of the upgrade of the Cow Pasture Road intersection, Flynn Avenue from Quonos Boulevard to Elm Street as widened four-lane road within the existing road reserve in consultation with council. Five, construction of the road upgrade and services for South Southern Cross Avenue between the western boundary of the land to Middleton Grange Primary School. Six, construction of the culvert and drainage works approved under the modification D O sixty-four dash two oh oh seven dash C. And seven, a monetary contribution of eight million dollars. B, the finalisation of the amendment of Part two point five Middleton Grange of the Liverpool Development Control Plan two thousand and eight and C, an amendment of the proposed land acquisition map is made to rectify the inconsistency with the Liverpool Contributions Plan two thousand and eight. We had Confo one, which is a question with notice by councillor Rhodes. Confo two, question of notice with councillor Rhodes. Confo three, question of notice with councillor Chitty. Confo four, we had a presentation which we note and received the report. Confo five, we, um, adopted the, the recommendation. Six, as the manager, we received and noted the report. And seven, we have, received and noted the report. And Confo eight, we, um, we approved the recommendation. Being there was no other business, the meeting is now closed and thank you all very much for attending and please stay safe.
Thank you, Madam.
Good night.